All right. Good morning, everyone. This time we're going to call our four survivors meeting to order October 29. Ms. Lake, thank you for getting up and getting ready to pray for us.
Thank you. Father, we're grateful for the opportunity that we have to come together to serve our fellow man, to serve you, Lord. I pray that you would give us the energy that we need today to do that wisely, Father, to do it in a way that pleases you. Father, when we have an opportunity like this to serve, I pray, Father, that we'll understand that we're serving you first. Lord, thank you for giving us the guidance that we need and protection with you. Our thoughts, our prayers are with the folks down on the coast, Lord, as they're dealing with the aftermath of this hurricane. I pray, Father, for those first responders that are already there, on the way. I pray, Father, for those who are trying to do the cleanup efforts. Father, I just pray that your hand of protection be upon them and that you'll return them safe in Christ's name.
Amen. All right. This time we're going to call, well, do we have a further comment, Tess?
Well, I don't know if we can do a plan at first.
Well, yeah, I guess we can. All right. This time we'll call our planning commission meeting to order. Do we have approval minutes?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Jared, taken by Steve. All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it. New considerations or old business? We have old business?
There is no old business.
Okay. New consideration?
All right, so the first item under new considerations is a conditional use permit for Tammy Holloman at 714 North Oak Ridge Drive. Ms. Holloman is seeking the conditional use permit to continue to operate a small USDA animal education facility in her home, which is located in the Oak Ridge subdivision off of Baker Lane. It's a one acre lot that's zoned RE1. That's an aerial view of the property. Ms. Holloman's application states that she offers private, pre-arranged educational conferences in her home for individual families and children with disabilities. They're offered two times a day, Wednesday through Saturday. She advertises the business on Facebook and she is licensed with the USDA as a Class C exhibitor. She completed the animal variance form and submitted proof of insurance and she included in the application a petition signed by homeowners in the Oak Ridge subdivision stating they were not opposed to the business. And I also received numerous testimonials from individuals who have attended the conference and hope that the business will be allowed to continue. So these are views of her home in that neighborhood. And then these are surrounding properties.
When you said you received letters from the neighbors in the neighborhood, does that mean all of the neighbors on that street?
We had all but one on the petition. When we checked the names, there was one that did not sign or that we didn't find who signed it.
Either way, I mean...
Yeah, all but one. And some of the people who emailed in favor of the business were from the neighborhood.
Yeah. I make a motion, we set it.
Second. Motion by Steve, set it. Second by Jared, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
All right, the next item is a conditional use permit for Dwayne Carr on Hickory Ridge Road. This property is located on the west side of Hickory Ridge Road. Mr. Carr is seeking the conditional use permit to place a 20 by 20, 16 by 80 manufactured home on this property. It's a 16.50 acre parcel of family land and it's zoned RE1A. There are currently three other homes on this property. If the conditional use permit is approved, Mr. Carr will have to survey out, he says, a 2.50 acre parcel for his home. This is a view of that property on Hickory Ridge.
Isn't that the, isn't that the house that's supposed to be torn down?
Or renovated, yes, sir.
Renovated, and how long has that been going on?
Several years.
Right. It's not anything else done to it? I mean, we've had, they've been here a couple times, isn't that the same once that'd be the, that's the second house on that parcel, correct?
It is. Is that older?
Something's probably going to have to happen. Something's probably going to have to happen there then.
Looks like it may be happening right now.
They're burning something in the yard.
Was that the couple that came in and wasn't there, wouldn't they come in first?
They were gonna, they didn't want to take it down, they were going to remodel it for their son. Initially, they moved in the mobile home there, going to help the relatives that's handicapped next door. And then immediately they put a fence up. So there's some reason they, I don't know what happened there, I really don't. But they were going to take the house down. That's the next door that they were going to help. And then they put a cyclone fence up separating where they couldn't get, neither one could get to the other one. And then they, the tray of the house was one that we were gonna, they said they didn't want to take it down, they wanted to remodel it for their son. And we told them it probably wouldn't be worth doing by the time we went out and inspected it. Anyway, they decided they're going to do it and all I, what I know, they wound up putting some windows in it. And that's been, that's been probably nearly four years ago.
Two or three years, for sure.
And they came in here again because nothing's ever done and they said, we told them, you know, they had to do something and we gave them some time to do something and they still have not done anything. So that's the second house on that parcel. So we're talking about doing a third one.
Yeah.
And where exactly is that third one going?
No, the third one, I think, let's see. Is that the home you're talking about for the handicapped, disabled?
Uh huh, which he's passed away, I believe, now.
So this, that, there's, I think that's three, this, this one, this one, and then the one that you said for the disabled fella are all on the 16.50 acres.
Already three.
Mm-hmm. This would be the fourth.
Yeah. That's where the, probably a problem. But where exactly are you talking about putting that one you're, you're talking about?
Mr. Carr may be here. Let's see, I think I...
He's sitting right there.
Is that you, Ms. Carr? Come on up for a second.
We need to know, I mean, we're going to settle a public hearing, but I...
How are you going to access the property?
Yes, I can. Can I share your information?
Sure. So what do we do about the other one? Is there power on it?
They got, they did not get power to the house that I'm aware of. They had started some work on it and Jerry Bounce was here, he had been out and met with them and I think there was some electrical things they had to change and after that we, I don't think we ever heard anything back from them.
It's, it's an old, 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 old place.
This home is going to go in this corner down here, I believe, the 2.50 acres.
Okay.
I was beating up the front, Jerry, you could put his own driveway.
The best one asking where's he going?
Yeah, quick climb and dig or something.
Yeah. Yeah.
I learned that this morning myself. Straight across the church. This is what the property right here, they're talking about.
I got you.
I don't know what...
Yeah. Here, it looks like here. So you're going to put in a driveway off that, what's the name of that road there?
Hickory Ridge Road.
Hickory Ridge. So is anybody living in that other dwelling right now?
Yes.
The house?
Yes. My uncle was in the first and then the second is my cousin.
We're talking about the old house.
The old house, right there where the smoke is, smoking.
Um, he's renovating, renovating.
But they've been renovating it for four years.
I know.
That's, that's, we can't just let, let me explain something. We, when we were going to do a conditional use for this and went and jumped through hoops to try to help them get that in there, the people of the church and all that area were okay with it, but they wanted it cleaned up.
Right.
Well, they hadn't done anything. And now we got, we got cars and things in the backyard that we're working on all the time. I hear constant complaints because they said they would do these things and they have not done any of these things.
Yes.
And, and I know you're a different person, but still, we're just adding to the problem.
Well, that's why I want to separate my 2.5 acres.
Yeah, I understand, but it's hard to, I got, we were told the same thing when we wanted to come in here and get the other one. Do it before, we want to do this and we're going to do this, same thing you're saying now. Notice has been up down there, I was going to tell you, I've already had phone calls about it. Some of them are not happy with it.
Right.
Because of what I just said. You said you were going to do this one thing and you hadn't done it on this, this right here.
That wasn't with...
I know that wasn't you, but I'm just saying that's the same thing, the story they heard before.
Yes.
Is, they said they would clean this up.
Yes.
Well, you're, you're a relative and I hate to bring it, tie the two together, but you can see where it's coming from.
Yes. My land where it been set up, my mother, we grew it, my mother built a house there. She was the first one there at 2, at the 2.5 acres. And because I had a stroke, that was one of the reasons I had to come home because I had no homestead. And so I wanted to get my own 2.5 acres so I could separate from my uncle and my cousin so I can...
Have you had that done yet?
Pardon me?
Do you own the property, do you have a deed for the property yet?
Well, no, I haven't got a deed. I was looking, I was looking at a permit so that once I set it, set everything up, then I can get the lawyer to come out there and help me to set up my separate, uh, own 2.5 acres.
Should have to be surveyed.
Surveyed.
Yes.
Where are you planning on accessing this, off McCain Lane or off Hickory Ridge?
Off Hickory Ridge.
All right. Show me where that driveway is going off of this picture here, or because there's not much room.
Nate showing where, showed Jared where he told us where it's going.
Right, look right here. Are you going to be in that bottom right corner?
Yes.
It's supposed to be in this area right here, the 2.5 acres.
Is that the church across the street, come get some?
It is.
Yeah. Yeah, all that church.
Is that the pastor or whatever?
So whenever you put your place there, what's going to happen with all the property in the back house, how loose is that?
Pardon me?
This property is the rest of the world that's wooded.
Well, being honest, I would like to pay out all the land so that I can separate my uncle and my cousin.
Oh, you want to like split the whole property down the middle or something?
Well, now, don't you, ain't there about thirteen of y'all? Ain't there about thirteen family members?
Well, we only have five, three aunties and two uncles left. And they, they're the ones that have to agree to separate or build anything, but no one has done anything on the land for 40 years.
The ones that have passed away, did they have children?
Yes.
They don't, they didn't get any...
Really, they don't, they don't really, they don't care about the land.
They might not right now.
Of course, right. But, yeah, they, they really don't care about taking care of the land. My aunt, she's the one that pays for the taxes, okay? But she stays in Illinois. My mother just passed away about four years ago and her land was where I'm at, she was the first one that was built there. The mobile home caught, caught on fire. So she ended up moving back to Illinois. We haven't been there, I haven't been back until about like eight years ago, talking with my cousin, Namon. We're very close and he just recently passed away. And the reason I want to come back, and yeah, and yeah, I have the place, I'm on social security.
Also living here is a lot cheaper.
That's right. From, from Wisconsin.
Okay, the girl that, the girl that's living there, that's your niece, but that's in the, the last mobile home where the old house is, is that your...
That is, my uncle stays there, my uncle and that.
The one that's facing the road right there.
Trailer, my uncle stays there. The, the old house, which was my grandma and grandfather's house, he started to build it with electrical and windows.
So that's your uncle that's, okay, I thought that was, okay. Well, okay, I dealt mostly with the, I guess this is, is that his wife or daughter or somebody? I dealt most with her when we were trying to get that in. And just so you know, I'm, I'm very familiar with the whole thing. I was born and raised right on the road from it.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm very familiar with the whole, so I knew it was a lot of y'all as family members.
Yes, but I don't, like I said, the way the deed was set up, through the lawyer and my, and my grandmom and grandfather, was that it started with their, their kids, you know, five and five, five daughters and five sons. There's only five left. Don't know who stays here right now is my uncle, Edward. And the other, next door is my cousin, which he's basically my second cousin because my first cousin just passed away, which is Namon Smith. Okay?
I tell you, we're going to go and set the, I'm going to make a motion, set the public hearing. But I was, the reason I wanted to just go and tell you the things I'm telling you, it lets you know there has been some talk in the community of being uncomfortable with someone else coming in there when the, what was done last time has still not been done to what they said they would do. And, and I know that's nothing to do with you, but unfortunately, it affects you because they're saying, hey, they didn't do it, how do we know he's going to do it? So I'm just, I just wanted you to know that, so anyway.
Well, I just bought a brand new mobile home. Um, I, like I said, I take care of it myself. My goal is to separate my 2.5 acres in like the next month or two months and have that done.
Yeah. Well, like I said, we're just setting a public hearing and that's where, and I make the motion, go and set it, I just wanted you to know.
All right. Please, by Jared, the second, by Brad, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
All right. The next item is a dimensional variance request by Chris Holafield at 1197 Old Fannin Road. This property is located on the east side of Old Fannin. Mr. Holafield owns Strong Point Storage and he's seeking the dimensional variance of 16 square feet from the signage requirements of the Reservoir Community District. This property is zoned C2, it's 4.70 acres. That's an aerial view. And the building will have two signs on it, seen here, and they total 146 square feet. He's proposing a third sign of 71 square feet that says climate controlled along the building. It will run down the west side of the building along, on the side that faces Old Fannin Road. Those are views of the building, I don't know if you can see that very well, but this is the building and the third sign will go in this area here along that strip of the building.
So what we're looking at today is just the signs on the building being larger than what?
Right, a variance of 16 feet.
I make a motion, we set it.
All right. Motion by Steve, taken by Jared, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Okay, the next item is a conditional use permit for Michael Myers at 1165 Barker Road. This park, property is located on the south side of Barker. Mr. Myers is seeking the conditional use permit to build a custom metal building home on this property. It's a 10 acre parcel, it's zoned RE1. That's an aerial view of the property. This is a site plan. The house will contain 2,500 square feet of heated and cooled space and the metal exterior isn't allowed in the RE1 district, so that's why he's seeking the conditional use permit. These are sample photos of what the house will look similar to. And then this is a view of that property. And these are surrounding properties.
Can, can you go back and tell, tell me, how many square foot is the heating and cooling?
2,500.
Okay. The only thing that we're really talking about then is the exterior.
The metal exterior.
Or, can I ask you a question?
Come on up, Mike.
Come on.
Nate Morris is up too.
Okay. What, uh, do you have a, do you have a picture of the, of the one that you're going to do?
Just in the plans we have. We, that's the, the one there is similar, ours is going to be 16 foot walls, it's going to be two-story. It's going to have a wraparound port from the front to it down the side where we're looking down the property toward, we're going to initially have a lake and, and then, but it's basically, basically that structure, the garage and the shop doors, the shop is just a storage area. It's on the back, just like this one is, with a door coming off the back.
Can't see that from the road?
No.
And...
The front of the house is facing just like that is right. The bottom picture is facing Barker Road.
I mean, the reason that we're here is you're proposing for it to be metal all the way around.
Yes, sir.
Could, and, and I'm the first one really that's brought this concept into the rural areas and it helps. It helps a whole lot in these places that have, well, that need bringing up. And, and I thank you for taking this step and, and being kind of frontiersman in this. However, we don't want to get on this slope that can get slippery when we start letting people build barns that they live in and it, well, he had this and it was metal all around and then, well, but, but he painted it. Then the next one, before, before long, we're back in worse place than we were before we started. So I, I would like to dress the front up.
It's going to, okay, well, it will have the wood columns, 10 by 10 columns on the front porches and stuff like that, and we're going to dress the front up. Are you, are you talking about like with brick or something like that?
It don't have to be brick. Uh, I mean, you could put lap siding or wood or whatever up, three foot, something, something, something around the front, what you can see from the road. And then the, I don't care what the back is, but the sides, put painted, treated metal and not just to where the next person or 10 from now is not saying, well, his is all aluminum and all the difference is his mind's got used tin on it now, you know? And that's what...
Well, it's definitely, it's definitely going to be doctored up. It's, it's not going to look just like a shop sitting in the middle of a field.
Okay. It is? Okay, well, that, see, that don't show.
Yeah.
Well, just...
When you come back...
It's going to be a two-tone.
Sarah's is red.
Sarah's is white.
White, all white?
This is Sarah's.
Yeah.
That's, that's right, that's, that's, yeah, that's 10 acres over from you, that's about 300 yards from my house where we're building.
Well, I, I make a motion to set it and just help me out, please.
Okay, oh, yeah, we'll definitely, we'll definitely doctor it.
You know what the value of that land out there has done just since you've been involved.
No, no doubt.
And we want to keep that.
That's right. I, I do too.
Thank you.
All right.
I make a motion, set it.
I second it.
Motion by Steve, taken by Jared, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you all.
All right, the last item is a conditional use permit for Robert Presley at 1139 Old Fannin Road and it's Suite R. This is located on the east side of Old Fannin. It's, the, Mr. Presley is seeking the conditional use permit to open a liquor store. This is in Fannin Plaza Strip Center. The property is zoned C2. Senate Bill 2253 went into effect in July of this year and it allows liquor stores in qualified resort areas of unincorporated Rankin County. Fannin Plaza is in that resort area. That's an aerial view. And then that on the end is Suite R, that's where it'll be going. Mr. Presley already has a license with ABC. He is wanting to relocate a store to Rankin County. That's views of that little strip center.
And that's PRV property?
No, it's, it's unincorporated, it's our area.
If it was PRV, we wouldn't have a say in it.
These are surrounding...
They think we do.
It's not BLBA.
I know, yeah.
These are surrounding properties and the zoning ordinance says that the store can't be located within 500 feet of the property lines of any existing residential use, residentially zoned property, church, school, hospital, convalescent or nursing home, cemetery, civic organization building or facility, park, playground, other things. We measured and we didn't find that it was within 500 feet of any of those uses.
Daniel, listen here, my thought is to set it, let people have their say and Daniel can put that together.
You knew I wasn't going to be able to just keep my mouth shut on this. So this is a conditional use applica, it's going to be a conditional use and that's the way our zoning context is established as it relates to liquor stores. This is just a quick reminder to you guys that it was anticipated that this day could come eventually. That's why there is in fact zoning already in place in your current zoning ordinance for liquor stores. This will be the very first opportunity that the board has to utilize that zoning approbation, that, what, what is already there that's been unused. This is your first opportunity to look at it and to consider it. This will be the first time that you've had to consider what sorts of conditional uses may be appropriate. I, I wanted to point that, point out that PRV recently adopted what they called a resolution. It's, in essence, it's an establishment of a framework, a profile, as it were, for how they will regulate any leasehold that complies with their liquor store authorization. Okay, so PRV being already a qualified resort status by virtue of the state law, they then have now set up a uniform set of conditions. And so we, we have a copy of PRVs and to the extent that this board wishes to sort of create some level of uniformity with what PRV is doing, those will be available to you for your consideration as well. I, I note that one requirement that they have is a minimum of 2,000 square feet of actual space that is available for the use. That was, that's PRV, I'm trying to make sure I'm right on that, yeah. And they, and they have some other regulations that go along with that that may not necessarily be of interest to this board, but, but they'll be there for your, for purposes of discussion. So we'll look at those. There are any number of other conditions that this board is authorized to utilize as it relates to how a location like this would be used.
So did PRV do anything as far as limiting the number that could be owned?
No, Jay, my revelation is no, that, that, that there's not going to be a limitation. Jay, it's interesting that you bring that up because I think it bears pointing out here. This location, maybe one or two others, within this strip center, may in fact be the only locations that will in fact qualify at the present time. And here's why. The, the hurdles that have to be overcome for a liquor store to be in Rankin County outside of PRV is it has to be qualified resort. Well, there's very few and far between of those in Rankin County. You can count them on less than fingers on a hand, okay? This happens to be one of those. If you clear that hurdle, that is qualified resort, then you've got to show that it's already zoned C2 or C3 or can be rezoned to C2 or 3, C3 under our context. So that further restricts it. And then after you clear those two initial hurdles, you have to clear that distance hurdle that Renee referred to. This site clears the first two hurdles, it's qualified resort, it's C2. So we move to the third hurdle, which is, is it closer than 500 feet to one of the adjacent use, land uses? And Renee named those off. So when you look at this site, even within the context of this site that has qualified resort and a qualified resort overlay over it, other locations on this site are going to be too close to one of your prohibited uses, I think, more than likely. This may be, I call it a uni, this is the unicorn location.
Well, and so could be the next place and the next place.
Well, yes, each bay, each bay within this unit here could potentially, now, is that economically feasible? I don't know. And, and is it desirable? Doubt. So at, at some point, the board's just going to have to wrestle with the idea that there are going to be very, very few spots that will qualify, meaning that there is a, a very real possibility of them being centralized, focused in one's area, and the board's got to wrestle with whether or not that's something we want or want to allow. And so if, if there's going to be significant discussion on that point, then I would encourage the board to consider some minimal amount of time delay to take any action until such time as the board has had an opportunity to consider any of the conditions it wants to consider and correspondingly, whether or not some of this regulatory context needs to be embedded within our zoning ordinance. and, correspondingly, whether or not some of this regulatory context needs to be embedded within our zoning ordinance, which means we need to take time to do that before we get started down this path. Letting one in and then changing everything creates a grandfathered status. And you guys know how that, how that goes for us, we've seen that on a number of occasions. I don't think it's what you want, I don't think it's desirable. In, in essence, we create a fireworks stand situation all over again with this, okay? So, the board needs to, to wrestle with that, I'm not telling the board what to do, I'm giving you the options as I appreciate them. Daniel is not here, it's his district. Um, he, he, he and I talked about this application, I asked him point blank, are you prepared to move forward with this? He told me candidly, no, that he would appreciate an opportunity to really consider it. At that point in time, PRV had passed that resolution the day before our conversation. So, neither he nor I had even seen it. Uh, so at this point, uh, we would, we would, uh, want to consider, at least consider whether or not a brief delay in consideration of the application is appropriate.
Unknowns here.
Yeah. So, I, I don't anticipate that we're gonna be in a situation where you're not going to act, no, that's not what we're talking about here. And we can move with dispatch to make sure we get good regs in place, what everybody feels like is important. We can talk about it on Monday if you want to and come, you know, come with some idea of a regulatory overlay for, for this particular use. I wanna spend a lot of time on this because we are talking about a very narrow range of areas, properties where this could happen. But there are others and there may be some appropriate uniform regulations that we wanna consider that would apply to every, each of the ones where we know that we might get an application. Okay?
Because we all have to explain this.
Yes. So, my thought would be, you, you may wanna consider passing this, this just be a table to your next planning commission, which would be the, uh, the end of September. Wait, end of, end of a.
It'd be December third.
End of November.
It'd be December, December third, I think is the next meeting.
I, I would, I would suggest that, uh, that we consider tabling it until that day. Then it can be set at that point and I think we'll have our regulatory overlay in place at that point.
We need a motion on that.
December three is where you'd wanna table it to.
I, I'm good with that, I make that motion.
I'd say.
If we need to.
Okay. All right, that's what you're gonna do, table, uh, motion to table by Jerry, uh, second by Steve, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, sir. All right.
All of Rankin County can watch this and call and let us know how they feel.
Oh, it's gonna feel, blow up.
Nuisance properties.
Oh, nuisance considerations. First item under my section is the Betty Squires nuisance property at one twenty-eight Holly Hedges Drive, this is District One property. Uh, we'll open that public hearing, I believe, uh, we're calling for Ms. Squires in the hall now. Renee will go ahead and demonstrate, please, with the photos.
All right, so, uh, we received, uh, this complaint in February of this year about rubbish and debris. Uh, this is in the Plantation Shores subdivision, these pictures were taken on February third. And these were the new pictures that were taken on the twenty-seventh. Uh, we did, uh, have some contact from the, uh, property owner's son who said he would be, uh, cleaning up.
Whoever wants to speak, y'all come on up here to the mic. Go ahead, man.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm Betty Squires.
Um, who, who said they're gonna do cleanup and when will they start or have they started? You are?
I've already started.
You, you have, like, what have you done?
Oh, in the driveway, I started cleaning all that stuff up, round back behind that shed. Were a bunch of vines, drove it up back there, cleaned up, all that, like, in there.
How, uh, how long you think it'll take you clean it up because you got quite a bit of stuff?
Oh, a bunch of that right in there that I already gone.
Is it, have you got pictures of that?
These pictures were taken on the twenty-seventh because we were afraid that the weather was gonna be bad and so we wouldn't get clear pictures.
Tell you what, we're rather than keep a lot of discussion, I, I appreciate you trying and, and making an effort to clean it up and, you know, we don't have a picture to show whether you have or hadn't that. I'm taking your word you have, but what we norm-, what we do here, and I think it'd be the safest thing for this one, and let me explain it, the attorney can explain it. We, we normally, we, we, what we'll do, we declare the nuisance. And the reason we do that, you can, you can continue on doing it, but that way we don't have to start this thing all over again if you don't clean it up. So, we're gonna declare it that and that way we've already got that. Now, what that means, if you don't, and we give you, we work with you and monitor it and give you, how long we think you, you think it's gonna take you to clean it up?
Oh, oh, about three weeks.
Okay, so, if we gave you, um, thirty days or we gave you, um, anyway, as long as you're making an effort, then, um, you won't have to be back in here. But what happens, if you don't have it cleaned up in, say, thirty to forty-five days, then what happens? That will go, be carried on up to justice court. And then once it gets there, it's out of our hands. So, I'm telling you, in this period, you need to get it done because once it goes up there, then you're gonna deal with the, the court. And, but that's the way we do, not, we're not singling you out, we do every, by a lot of people the same way, provide you're making an effort. So, at this point, I'd like to declare it a nuisance, but I was, that's where I wanted to explain to you what it, what that meant. I didn't want you to think immediately you're headed to the justice court. So, you've given you the time, you got some good time to clean it up and I appreciate you trying to clean it up. So, anyway, this time I'd like to declare it a nuisance.
All right, we have a motion by Jared.
Second.
Second by Brad, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Fair enough?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
To the extent we haven't done it, we'll close that public hearing, we'll move to the next one, which is the Betty and Bobby Canoy nuisance property at one twenty-eight Montane Street, it's District One property. We'll open that public hearing. Ms. Renee, I'll ask you to demonstrate with the photos.
All right, uh, we received complaints on this starting in June of this year, rubbish and debris and, uh, tall grass. These pictures were taken on the fifth of June. So, I think the contact has been from the tenant, uh, Adam Fowler, uh, who said he would get the property cleaned up.
Are you, are you Adam?
Yes, sir, um, I've been doing a lot of work, like, right there where that picture is, but there, that camper's not mine. My better half was letting a lady come in and stay with us. And every time we contact her about getting her stuff, I believe I talked to Ms. Kathy, I don't know who Ms. Kathy is. I talked to Ms. Kathy a couple times on the phone. All that right there is cleaned up, I done done a lot on the back porch. I probably got another, probably six, maybe seven days left. I know there's a burn pile where I was burning stuff, like, right there. I gotta clean that up, uh, if you can leave that there from like right there with that, on the left side, right there with that little truck.
Don't even mention the burn pile, just move on.
Well, I back around that way, back around that back porch.
Yeah.
I gotta clean up some stuff back there. Uh, I can tear that poo down, but ain't nothing wrong with that poo, it's a brand new poo. But if that needs to come down.
We don't have to.
I think the poo is fine.
No, we're just talking about the, the obvious stuff.
Yes, sir.
And I, because I wanna tell you, the people in the Plantation Shores have, over the years, have, have really gone a long way to try to keep things cleaned up and they got it, they've, a lot of improvements over the years. And so, that's what, um, we don't ride around looking for it, somewhere in that the homeowners or whoever is one that's pushing and wants it. Then I understand why. And I appreciate you, uh, making an effort. And as far as that, that trailer, even though it's somebody else's, unfortunately, it's on your property, it's gonna fall, responsibility falls on you.
Yes, sir.
You're not supposed to live in it.
Yeah.
Oh, don't, don't nobody live in it.
But I'm just saying if it, I, I mean, if it's a prob-, if it has a problem, still it's gonna fall on you because you're the landowner.
Yes, sir.
But I'm gonna do, basically, you heard what I said a minute ago, the same way you said you'd like a week or two. But that way, we're gonna go and declare it that way, that way we don't have to start this whole thing over again.
Yes, sir.
And you still got plenty of time to get it done. And I appreciate you making the effort that you, you've done, so I don't see any reason we can't go into, clear nuisance and, but let you continue on just like you're doing and, and keep, uh, working with Kathy and them.
Yes, sir.
Uh, make sure you get it right, just make it, you know, take a little pride in that, the people around there are trying to too.
Yes, sir.
So, are they good enough?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
I have a motion by Jared, clear nuisance.
Second.
Second by Brad, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, sir.
To, to the extent we fail to do it, we close that public hearing. Uh, number three is the Emery Morton and Michelle Cargill nuisance property at one thirty-eight Holly Hedges Drive, it's District One. We'll open that public hearing, I'll ask Ms. Renee to demonstrate.
All right, uh.
They're not here. Okay, I didn't see you back there.
We received this complaint in August of this year about rubbish and debris, grass and inoperable vehicles. These pictures were taken on the nineteenth of August.
This is all.
These are the new pictures. This is in Plantation Shores as well.
All right, you wanna come up and tell me what's going on, what the plan is?
Well, I mean, with the grass, my lawnmower broke, I went out and bought a new lawnmower, I ain't gonna lie. Went to mow the backyard and boom, it hit something, ripped a little shaft out of the bottom of the motor. So, I had to wait to borrow my brother's lawnmower and that took me about a week and a half, two weeks to get it. And, uh, uh, the only truck that is inoperable is the big truck right there and I.
Is which one?
That big one right there in the back.
Uh-huh, the white truck?
Yes, sir, well, the one in the very back with the, all the stuff on it. Yes.
Oh, the one, oh, there it is.
Oh, oh, camouflaged, I guess.
Yeah, that's the only one that doesn't crank, doesn't run. Um, and, and it's not actually mine, but I called the fella who owns it and he said that, uh, he'd see if he could find somewhere to put it. Told him, he, he got a couple of weeks.
He gotta get it, 'cause like I said, just like you heard, may have heard me say, it falls on you.
Yeah, I.
He putting, you're his problem on you and you're the one that's having to come here.
Right, well, what it is, is I used to work for him and I was actually driving it when it broke down, I was probably about a block from the house. So, we pulled it to my house and it's been sitting there ever since. And, uh, I told him, I give him a couple of weeks, if he don't, I was just gonna drag it to pull apart.
Yeah.
So, I was trying to give him enough time to get it, because I mean, just a bed on that truck's worth twelve grand, so.
If you, yeah.
I was trying to give him enough time.
Um, what about the other stuff?
Motorhome.
Uh, need to be organized a little bit there. I think that's kinda what they're looking at also. You know, you got, I understand a lot of that stuff you probably use, but I'm saying organize it and move it in the building. I'm sure, in the area you live in, unfortunately, and fortunately, wherever you wanna look at it, people drive by there and they see it every day.
Yes, sir.
You lived out, way off out, nobody would even notice it probably, but they do. So, you're kinda in the limelight there, center point.
Yes, yes, sir.
So, you're gonna have to clean it up.
Yes, sir, and normally it is clean and, uh, I mean, it's just with all this stuff and not working very much right now, so.
Well, your grass don't look that bad to me.
It was.
No, it was.
Yes, sir, when I said my lawnmower broke, my round mower broke and then two hundred forty dollars on a push mower. I mean, I only got half the backyard cut before it broke.
Yeah.
So, they weren't lying when they said a grass.
Well, you're probably cutting that big grass and just mowing it, push mower can handle.
Probably.
All right, well, um, about the only thing we can do is the same thing we've, we've been doing in this. And there again, I think, uh, you, you're making some headway. Uh, one, one thing before I ask you, what, say that, what about this, uh, the travel trailer, what's the deal with it?
Uh, you, you, you talking about the camper?
Yeah.
It's my work camper.
Huh?
It's my work camper, when I go out of town, that's what I stay in.
Okay. All right, well, I thought I saw a road sign. Is that one of our county road signs? Back it up.
I think that's the last picture, isn't it?
It sure is, leaned up against the back of the truck.
I'd be dead down.
Uh, I didn't put it there, so, that's all I know. It's leaned up against the back of that truck, I seen it.
Drop that off back over at the, uh, road department. Thank you. Yeah, I'm gonna tell you right quick, I'm not saying that at all, but I'm, I'm laughing inside because for some reason, that Plantation Shores area, it, somebody likes getting the signs there. Sometimes they'll even pull them up and just throw them out in people's yards, but I mean, it's just a thing about taking signs in that Plantation Shores area. So, yeah, that was bad.
Well, I mean, I know for.
That was bad to see a sign over there.
For a couple of weeks it was sitting right, like, right there in the ditch. I, I just left it there, I ain't know who put it there. So, I don't know who put it over there.
That's the word I get, it's laying in the ditch.
No, it wasn't laying, it was sitting up like somebody put it there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's the way I get the, I hear about it. But anyway, back to that, well, that's, uh, do you the same way, you're gonna clear the nuisance, you got plenty of time now to get it cleaned up. And, uh, and like I say, keep monitoring it with our staff and, uh, they'll be watching it and, you know. But if, if it doesn't, like I say, it'll wind up at justice court and that's where you don't want it to get.
Yes, sir, I understand.
But we're gonna, we're working with you to give you time to get it done.
All right.
I make, that's the motion I'm making.
All right, appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in. Motion by Jared, clear the nuisance. Second by Brad, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next one's gonna be, uh, Evans.
In case we haven't, we need to close this one. I think that's what Craig says every time we.
That's right.
I, I will announce that we have closed that case.
I started saying it when I was taking motion, the way I was letting Craig cover it.
That's it. The next item is the Sheriff Livingston property through Mill Creek, Rock, District Rock. I will open that public hearing, I believe, uh, someone in the house is, or the Evans themselves are here, uh, and, uh, I guess you have a mic for. Uh, so Renee's gonna demonstrate with the photos.
All right, so, uh, this is in Mill Creek subdivision, we received a complaint on September the eighth about rubbish and debris, inoperable camper and, uh, grass and problems with the fence. These pictures were taken September the eighth. This is in the backyard. We did hear from Ms. Evans and she said that they would start, uh, trying to get it cleaned up and replace the fence boards. And so, there has been a good bit of work that has taken place. But the camper's still there, there's still some work to be done, it looks like.
So, are y'all here?
Yes, I think they are.
They're right there.
Do y'all plan on keeping the camper there, 'cause I, I think it's gonna have to go.
Plan on keeping the camper there?
No, we can move it.
Okay. Looks like you've done a lot, uh, cleaning up.
Yeah, he's been, we've been, not to make excuses, but he's got a terminal illness now and we didn't, we have been dealing since February first, trying to find out what's wrong with him. And he can't now do the work he used to, so it kinda piled up, we're now counting on the son-in-law. That's all we have to help us clean it up, so, he's working on it. Son-in-law's in the military, comes in on Friday, helps us on the weekend.
Okay. Will that might give y'all some time to get it taken care of? How long you think it'll be before he might can get it, that camper?
Well, it's, it looks better now, we've got a lot of that stuff moved already.
Oh, yeah, it looks great compared to those other photos, for sure.
But the problem is the son-in-law, he's gonna, that trailer has more limbs on it, he's gonna take them before we take them to dump them. But he'll do it today's Thursday, he'll probably do it tomorrow, Saturday.
So, if we give thirty days, that ought to be enough time.
How much?
Thirty days, a month?
Yeah, we'll try, yeah. Depends on if he gets sick and I have, we have to go to the hospital. Because I'm serious, we've been in and out of the hospital, he has a terminal illness and we just have to work with what he, we're getting blessed with.
All right, well, I don't know if you was in here, the way, uh, we've been dealing with these, we'll go ahead and declare it a nuisance so that we don't have to start the process all the way back over. So, uh- So, um, but we will give you a lot of time to take care of it. That way you won't have to go up to Justice Court.
Appreciate that.
All right.
You made that motion.
All right, I'll make the motion for the nuisance, second by Jared, you have a discussion? All in favor say aye. Ayes aye.
This closed.
I have the Erica Payman nuisance property at five oh six Cedar Green Court, District Three property. We'll open that public hearing. Renee, you'll demonstrate with photos, please.
All right, um, this property is located in Cedarstone subdivision. We got a complaint on June of this year about inoperable vehicle rubbish and debris. Uh, the inoperable vehicle is the blue one sitting in the driveway. These pictures were taken June the twenty-second.
Wow, that's a classic.
And then these are the new pictures that were taped, taken on, uh, twenty-seventh. The mail was received, but we haven't received a response from anybody.
Is this, uh, which one are we on?
This is first three. Erica.
Erica?
Okay. Good morning. So, uh, are we gonna get this cleaned up so we don't have to send you up to Justice Court?
Yes, sir. When you saying clean, what you mean, that's what we're in.
Well, I mean, it, it looks like there's some stuff out front right there, you probably need to get moved out in front of your garage or carport.
My garage is full as well.
Yeah, well, it sounds like you might need to do some cleaning up, 'cause your neighbors are not gonna let this go. And we can't just sit here and not do anything.
It's not us doing, it's, I mean, the neighbors, some, somebody has made a complaint, that's why you're here. Whose car is that?
My son's.
It's been broke down a while, hasn't it?
It has. Once he got incarcerated, I wasn't able to move it 'cause it sits so low. And then I got injured on my job. But it runs at a crank, but since it sits so long, the transmission won't go in reverse. And I wanna get it fixed so I can drive it, once I get the inside done and to sit the seat and stuff up, but. I may just have to pull it back into the garage, once I get all the stuff outside the gar- out the garage.
You got a lot out front there, what?
That's, that's my mower and my chair I sit in. And some bikes, my nephews be riding when they come over.
I mean, I know the neighbors are probably seeing a lot of clutter out front and I mean, we. Of course, the back. I don't know if you can put a privacy fence up or something like that, but I mean, we, we weren't, we, but I mean, the cars. I don't know, what's the ordinance say?
You look like you live on a corner.
Sir.
It's kinda like a corner lot.
Yes, sir, it's in the clutter.
You got it two ways. They got you from the front and the back. I mean, seriously, within that corner lot, they see it both ways, so that's where all, I'm sure it's coming from, all the way around.
We, we're gonna have to declare it a nuisance and, I mean, we can give you thirty days to make something happen. Or if, if you can't, I mean, it's going to, going to Justice Court.
You don't wanna be there.
And I mean, if, you might go rent a storage facility and put some of that in storage. I mean, I don't think you far from a storage facility.
Well, hey, probably put you a wooden fence up right there, you can put the car in the backyard, it'll all be out of sight.
And that might be the cheapest thing to do, and I mean, it'd be there from here on out.
I was thinking about parking the car on the side of the house, but the, um, homeowner association said no vehicles on the gra- on the grass. But I have like four vehicles, so my son is driving one of them. The Jetta. And I, I have a one-car garage and it's full, and so I kinda rotate them. My other. I know, right?
We're gonna declare it a nuisance and, um, I mean, we're gonna give you thirty days.
Yeah, you don't wanna have to deal with the judge, 'cause then you're gonna be paying court costs.
I mean, I would suggest if you got any relatives or anybody that can come and get this car, get it towed over there to their place, out in the country, not in the subdivision, would be the best bet.
Don't bring it out in District Four.
Thanks for coming today.
Okay, you said thirty days?
Well, yeah.
Wait thirty days and try.
No, 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 I'm, I'm gonna tell my son to come. Cause it look bad on the pictures, I guess I've gotten used to it.
Well, I, I would appreciate, I would appreciate you, yeah, that, that made my day there, that's good.
And see, and we're not trying to pick on nobody, I mean, but. Cause they, they call us, they call them over there and complaining about it, and we got to take some type of action.
There's probably neighbors and got, the people that pass by their constantly going to the home. Like I said, you're on a corner lot, I mean, you're getting it from both sides, they can see the back, they can see the front.
Make, make them a pie and s- give them a pie, your neighbor or something. But I mean, these get cleaned up.
It's how big garage sell.
It looks bad.
I mean, a garage.
Garage sell. But they don't sell, haul off.
Okay.
And we got, we got a dumpster down here on Market that you go and.
I'm gonna clean it up before the thirty days.
All right, it's a good deal.
Okay, thank you, Al.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, so, uh, we got a closed that hearing, Brad's, uh, making the motion.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Brad, second by Jared, you have a discussion? All in favor say aye. Ayes aye.
Okay, item, uh, six is the Glenn and Shirley Hopper nuisance property at one twenty-five Honey Circle. This is a District Three property. We'll open that public hearing. Whoever's here to speak on the Hopper matter can start making their way.
He, Glenn wouldn't gonna be able to make it today.
All right, so these pictures were taken on September, uh, the first. We received the complaint that day about grass, rubbish and debris, appliances and inoperable vehicles.
Can you zoom in, I'd just like to see what all's out there.
Literally got every piece of property, he got, he got something all on.
How big a property is this?
It is one acre.
I heard there was some kind of sign there, too. Where is that?
I think, I think it got removed, let's see.
He has cleaned up now, I've been in contact with him.
Looking forward to seeing that Brad Calhoun for supervisor sign.
I'll help you out, Brad. I'll make the motion, we, uh, move this up to Justice.
Second. Oh, motion by Steve, second by myself, you have a discussion?
He has tried, he needs three more days, is what he's saying.
Three more days? Well, if he can get it done in three days and they will call them.
Two days ago.
Well, I would like to stand there and watch him work then. He, if he can do it in three days, he probably can beat the paperwork. Is that right? I said, if he can do it in three days, he can beat the paperwork.
All right, motion by myself, or Steve, second by myself, all in favor say aye.
For the record, that, that hearing is closed. Uh, item seven is the Joe and Cindy Daniels nuisance property at one seventy-three May Estates Drive, District Three. We'll open that public hearing. Um, the, whoever is here to speak on the Daniels matter can make their way forward. Renee, you'll demonstrate with photos.
All right, these pictures were taken on, uh, March the tenth. We'd received a complaint about rubbish and debris and inoperable vehicles. Uh, this property's at May Estates. We did get a response to our mail and, uh, some work has been started on the property. These are the new pictures.
Let me ask a question, why, oh, like, these are the first pictures we've taken in March, why's it taken till now to get anything started on it? Just, I'm, I'm talking.
To me? Ms. Daniels, are you, you're, okay. She had talked to Kathy and, uh, her daughter lived there and, uh, she passed away in June.
I got you.
And so she said she would start work on trying to get it cleaned up and I think she's tearing down that porch.
You're the mother. Property is in your name.
Mine and my husband, yes.
Your daughter was living there.
Correct.
That passed away.
Yes, sir.
Your other daughter is interested. And the reason I say that, uh, she talked to me. She's interested in not letting this property go in any further disarray or even lose property or whatever.
Right, we're in the process of getting it cleaned up.
So you and Ashley are working together?
Um, not really, I hired somebody to go out and clean it up for me.
Okay, but, but, that's fine.
I have a letter from him. In fact, he was out there last night and got stuck in the yard, so, but most of this stuff is gone. That white truck, I do have a question about it. That belonged to my daughter's fiance. I've called his mother, he doesn't have a phone, I've called her several times to tell him if he wants it, he needs to get it off the property. ASAP. I've been doing this for like two or three months and I did get a response from her the other day saying they want it. Legally, what can I do because it's still sitting there? They were supposed to get it last weekend.
We just happen to have a guy to answer questions like that, standing right there.
With, uh, without a title, it's gonna be a little problematic. You're gonna need to, you're gonna need to be more official than just, hey, I'm gonna call a tow truck and they gonna come get it. Because of the relationship, because of the situation at hand, I would caution you not to take any drastic action as it relates to that truck, you don't want him suing you for conversion, right? I don't know what the arrangement was between your daughter and him. I, I don't know what that situation was. He, he may feel like he has some sort of right, uh, as it relates to use of that property. My, my, my advice would be find an attorney who can help you navigate that. It's not gonna be us.
I thought that we had a method to where, I know several years ago, we would go get cars off the street in Robin Hood.
Yes. Abandoned vehicles is a different question.
If that truck was being sitting on the road.
Yeah, it's off, it's on private property, that's the.
But if that truck's sitting on the road.
In our way.
We can get it there. I might gotta ask you this morning.
But you know, if it's, it's a problem with traffic and all, we, we have.
Well, I mean, it is sitting on my property and it's broke down.
I understand, but.
And it's causing me a problem.
There, there was a, there was some sort of interest in property that your daughter maintained, whether that was a tenancy of some kind. Y'all allowed her to be there, it was treated kinda like in this arrangement. He, he may rear up and say that he has some kind of right.
He is kinda crazy, so.
I want you to get with legal counsel and make sure you navigate how to put him on notice, come get it or these things are gonna happen. Make that official and then write him.
I don't even know where he, I guess he's with his mother, I don't know.
Talking to mom? You, you're not really talking to him.
Right, he doesn't have a phone.
All right, I understand, I get the whole different. But something needs to be communicated directly to him and you have evidence that that was done.
And, and on the other hand, listen, I mean, if everything is cleaned up and that's the only thing that's there on the property, we're not gonna give you a hard time on it.
I'm gonna still keep working to get it, get it gone.
Yes, yes, right. But most of this, a lot of this stuff is gone, um, as you can see, it's been, it's starting, it's in a work in progress. Um, I have a letter from the guy, does he go on them? Put it in the file or whatever.
Just give it. How, how much longer do you think does he need, you think?
He said he could probably have it done, if the weather permitting, in about ten days.
All right, so if, if we just, we're gonna declare it a nuisance and we're gonna give him thirty days.
Okay.
And, uh, in, in the meantime, let's try to get the owner or the guy that wants the truck, just reach out and if not, it might end up on the side of the road one day.
Well, I can get it out there, I mean.
I'd rather that not happen. On the side of the road, you'd have to move. Now that we've had this discussion, I'd rather that not happen. I, I think there's a way that if you write a letter, a certified letter, have him served. If you don't have it removed, then you're gonna have it towed and he can pick it up at wherever it's towed to, but he'll owe a tow bill too, in storage. But you probably need to start that, like he says, with a certified letter.
Okay, from me?
From, to him.
Right.
If you got an address, send it to him.
Just do that and focus on cleaning the rest of this up, uh, soon.
You got my son-in-law could go do it, couldn't he? He's got all those fat hoes and tractors and.
There you go.
That's, that's not even gonna happen. He's so busy, he don't have time to do anything.
I mean, thirty days, we're gonna declare it a nuisance and, uh, we'll monitor and, um, uh, but we're gonna declare it a nuisance.
Is that old truck?
That's the one you're talking about, isn't it?
No.
No, I'm talking about the white Ford, that white Ford on the right. The old truck is sitting in the driveway, the guy went out to get it last night and he got stuck in the yard and he, it was raining, he got aggravated. So he's sitting in the driveway wanting to pick up, he may get it today.
Well, we're gonna get some dry weather next week, so, I mean, you got a little time, but do what you can and get it cleaned up.
Yes, sir, I will.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
That public hearing is closed.
All right.
Mr. President, I think that's all of the nuisance. I'm sorry, no, no, that is all.
So. So Brad made a motion for clear nuisance.
I'll second.
Second by Jared, all in favor say aye. Ayes aye. All right. So I have most adjourned till, uh, December third.
Making motion adjourns, December third.
By Brad, second by Jared, all in favor say aye. We are adjourned now, call four supervisors, lean back to order. And, uh, so we don't have public comment, or we do? If I see the judge here.
Thought we were. Judges. I thought one, I thought one.
There was two judges.
There he is, he's behind the.
Oh, he's behind the pole.
Not seeing any public comment, we'll jump into my section here. First one is consideration of potential action to authorize a credit card processing agreement for our tax collector's office.
I see Ms. Caroline's here. Uh, this should be simple, we, uh, this is the same processing company that we've been using. It's just simply time to renew that agreement and so it's being proposed that Graphite Payments LLC would continue to serve the, uh, tax collector's needs as it relates to processing credit card payment for their transactions.
What's happening here and the need for an update here is, and, and nothing changes with respect to the financial side of this. The, the cost, I think, two and a half, five percent, uh, on, on each processing payment would be there, that's the compensation to the processor. But they're gonna provide us with units that, uh, are gonna really help us with our, uh, with our separation and not having to handle credit cards. The, the, the users will be able to access these devices now themselves. So there won't be any handing credit cards back and forth, staff to customer, okay? So that's one positive benefit for it. Second, uh, the, uh, they're going to expand their offerings, now we'll be able to take AMEX, uh, which should help, uh, avoid some unpleasant conversations from time to time. Uh, that's gonna be a positive as well. They were very easy for me to work with to get a thirty-day termination clause. Uh, they quickly agreed to all of my requests. I made ten or eleven change requests to the processing agreement and they made them all. Uh, we had a couple of issues we had to get past, but we got past them fairly quickly. So I'm satisfied, I like the agreement, you got a thirty-day out. If we get into a situation, we don't like how it's going, we can get out. So I would propose that we.
Second. Jared, second by Brad, you have a discussion? All in favor say aye. Ayes aye.
Item B, uh, and Paul's here, thankfully. Uh, item B is a discussion of potential action regarding the adjustments to Circuit courtroom A, Circuit courtroom B jury boxes to provide for some sort of separation for our jurors. Uh, this is basically a continuation, uh, call, come on. Uh, this is a continuation of the discussion we gave, we, uh, gave before. Joe Daniel, y'all are welcome to come forward and, uh, be a part of this.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Uh, you may remember, last time we were here discussing this, that we were looking at, uh, doing some improvements, mainly the separation due to actions that have happened with COVID and we were, those, those improvements required. Well, what we were looking at, uh, the optimum solution was expanding the jury box, putting some, uh, dividers in between the seats, uh, reworking the clerk's desk because we were gonna have to relocate the, uh, their attorney tables due to expanding the jury box and, uh, doing some other things, some new carpet things like that. And at that time, we were looking at somewhere around $60,000 to $65,000 per courtroom, for two courtrooms, not all three. Since then, I've gone back, and we were also looking at all new jury chairs, which were a couple of thousand dollars, a thousand dollars apiece or so. Anyhow, we've gone back and relooked at how we can do that, and for a lot less money. And I went back and revisited the existing jury boxes. And unfortunately, those chairs are, they touch each other. There's no way to put in dividers without expanding the jury box, to be quite frank. Now, I looked at the possibility of unboating the chairs, expanding the jury box big enough by at least separating the chairs by, you know, anywhere from four to six inches, so we can get that in there. And we can do that. If we, if we were to do that and do it as a public bid, I'm estimating somewhere between $30,000 and $35,000 apiece because of the bidding and the contractor and his overhead and his insurance and all of that. However, the other option would be, and I think we discussed this briefly last time, we can do the same type work. In other words, we got, we have to expand the jury boxes both width and the length to get these in there. But if we unboat the chairs, reuse the chairs, the cost for materials, the plexiglass and some wood and molding is approximately $10,000 to $12,000 per courtroom. Now, the labor would need to be done by the county's forces, either your own maintenance forces, or trustees, or whoever. And that's really the most economical option that I can come up with. And all that accomplishes is basically redoing the jury boxes so that you have enough room to get some type of plexiglass dividers in there. Nothing else would be done.
You wouldn't have to do the attorney tables or clerk.
We, the attorney tables can be shifted down. Now, they would be off-center. They would be shifted down to the left, basically. And I hadn't discussed any of this with the judges, so I don't know if that would be acceptable to them to do that.
And the plexiglass, will it be like a three-sided deal, a back and two sides, or?
Yeah, it would be in between each chair, and then on the front row, you would have a back piece to it. On the back row, it would just be on the sides, generally speaking.
And bolt it to the floor, or just sit there?
Well, it can be done either way, Brad. Up in Madison County, they just set them there. But we can bolt them to the floor. And the reason why they set them there there is, I think they're planning on taking them.
One day.
Yeah.
Be in this situation.
Why wouldn't it work just sitting there?
Because they're going to be bent. I mean, they're.
Yeah, they're going to, they're going to be in a, basically a U shape, Jared, so that that gives them some stability. But now, it's not the, it's not the most stable thing, because it allows that flexibility to move.
To make.
And I'll allow the judges to tell me how that's working up there. I know they had one incident up there. But I don't know if bolt it to the floor would have made any difference or not in that case. Now, we're looking at plexiglass because that seems to be, the other thing would be glass in a, in a, basically a storefront metal frame. And that's going to be, that's going to be more money, but that would be more permanent situation. Probably that's another $4,000 for the, as opposed to $5,000 or $6,000 for that type material, probably $10,000.
So do you have the layout, you have the layout that we could give to our staff to get started?
I can, I can develop one. What I had before was all new, but yes, it wouldn't take but an hour or two to revise that to give to your staff, I think.
Would that be sufficient for you guys, the judges?
Well, I don't know exactly what we talked about, about moving the council table over, but what we talked about previously, and I've talked with the DA's office, is putting them L-shaped, basically leaving the defense counsel where it is, and moving the states over to where the clerk's desk now is, so that the state would be facing the jury, and then moving the clerk's table to the side there, up front.
Yeah, this is basically what, yeah. We were going to redo the clerk's table, which we can still do that, but again, that's just more money. I can't remember how much I had before, $3,000, $4,000 to re, because what we're doing is basically tearing out the bayless area and expanding it of the clerk's table, because they, they need room for two people, as I understand it, plus some printing equipment on top of it. And so that was ideal. That's what we were looking at all this before, and then we're looking at redoing all the carpet in the courtroom to make it uniform.
So a couple of things. I don't know that, I don't know that you could have council table staying in the same position that they normally, normally would be, because you've got to get in and out of the well of the court, and how close you're going to be to the jury. So I think that we're going to end up in a L shape in some shape, form, or fashion if we do that. But a couple of things that I do want to say, the plexiglass in Madison County, I've had three trials in there now, and some other judges have had some other trials. It works. The jurors feel comfortable with that. We did have a problem, though. The third trial I had up there, there was a step up going to the back row, and a gentleman walked in with mask on. He missed that step, reached over, and as he was stumbling, he grabbed that plexiglass. Because it was movable, it moved, and it cut his hand. After that, they came back in, and I went over and felt it, and it's sharp. So they went over, and I don't know if they extended it, they did something to the tops of that plexiglass. It would not be sharp. So hopefully, that's been resolved. The jurors are comfortable sitting in those boxes and feel, feel safe doing that.
They're, they're polished. They can polish those edges and ease those edges.
Just round them over the top of them. They also got that little trim piece that go on there that snaps right on, and you can just contour it to whatever shape.
So. He was a heavyset gentleman, I understand him.
No, he really wasn't. It was the fact that he stumbled, he stumbled and he fell. But he was younger than me, so watch that. But anyway.
Yes, sir.
The other thing that I want to talk to y'all about is, now I've had, I've tried three cases in Brandon City Hall. And some other judges have tried some cases there as well. I really didn't notice too bad in the civil cases, but in the criminal cases, trying a case there is just not the same as trying a case in the courtroom. For example, the case that I tried most recently was a child sex abuse case, and you've got a child that's sitting on a stage, okay? In a huge area, and that's not the same as that going on in the courtroom up here. There's some issues with sound. Now, I appreciate doing that, because it beats in us not being able to do it. But it, it just, for myself, and I think you talked to the district attorney's office, they will confirm this, because I've talked to them. We really need to do something to move those trials back in the courtroom. We're still going to have to use that for voir dire. We're still going to have to use that for qualification of jury, but we really need to move these trials back into the courtroom.
All right.
I could tell you lots of other things, but.
We'll get it done. Either our staff can't do it, we'll get somebody else to do it.
Two at a time issue that we have to see, I think that's important to point out.
Well, yeah. On the six-week terms, when I'm here, there's just one judge. But when Judge Ratcliffe and Judge Arthur are here, there's two judges, and there's only one place to try the case. And so, especially during criminal trial weeks, I mean, we're getting behind, or we can get behind, because we don't have a full one place to try cases when two judges are here. And those trial weeks are set the same, and that's another long discussion. But basically, because of the DA's office, because of public defender, because of all the court staffs, that was the most economically feasible way to do it when we had courtrooms available. But now that we don't have courtrooms available for both judges to try at the same time, then it presents a problem. But anyway, I would just, I told y'all last time, I love our courtrooms. But we need to get back there, and this is what I think, and we've talked to other judges and DA's office, this is what I think needs to happen.
How many courtroom, how many are we talking about?
We're just talking about changing the two circuit courtrooms. Judge Mack's courtroom, most of his trials are six-person jurors, so he can use his bots and seat those jurors every other chair.
Okay.
And if he has a, in any case where he has to have 12 jurors, he can put them in our courtroom.
Okay, so, okay.
So we talking about around $30,000 to do the two, if we go with the second option with the.
Yeah, I think so, using the labor force. Now, what, as I understand it, what we need to do then, as a minimum, we need to expand the jury box. That means what we're going to do is take up the seats, demo the jury box, and rebuild it so it's wider. Put the existing seats back. We're not looking at buying new seats, as I understand it. We will need to, as I understand, and Judge mentioned, we're going to just move the attorney tables up there now, but that will need to rework, to demo the existing bayless box, and rework it for the clerk. So that's what we're looking at, and so we're probably looking at, you know, $15,000, maybe a little bit more of material, no labor costs. We're not going to, we're not going to, we're going to leave the carpet like it is. I think we can do that.
How long, how old is that carpet?
I don't know. It's.
Well, courtroom B, which is what Judge Arthur's courtroom is, is the third one now, third courtroom we have over there. That renovation work was done 2016?
Yeah, 16, yeah, that's right.
Okay, so there is a portion of that carpet Steve that's, that's on the bar side, it's on the court side of the bar, that's new, that's, that's four years old.
I would like to look at it when we get into it. I mean, because when you start moving things that are attached to the floor, and then try to come back and patch it, it may be.
That's what we were planning on doing, replacing, because you're exactly right.
Look at it, and if it needs it, figure that, because it, I don't have to come back and do it.
After we get to the right seats.
We can look at it and see what we can do on that.
Just give us.
Because you can hardly, in those courtrooms, you're not going to be able to patch it where it looks exactly the same. Just wear and tear. We can look at that. The biggest cost on the floor was bidding, and it's just because the contractor has to have a person there all the time, probably a helper. He's got insurance, he's got the gross receipts stacked, he's just got all this overhead, and it's as much as, as the actual work. Plus these kind of make problems.
I think with it being right here in town, and our maintenance, boy, and maybe a carpenter or two, or whatever, from the sheriff, that we could do it. I'd like to talk with Taylor, our maintenance guy. I mean, we'll talk to him, see what he thinks, but, you know, right here in town, he can take care of a light bulb not working over here in this office and this, if it was 30 miles away.
The board wants to go forward, that's what I suggest. Let us get some drawings done, some millwork drawings, and we can give it to the people. They can see. I don't think it's going to be, you know, too complicated. It's going to be similar to what's, what's there, so. And I do know that the sheriff has a, he's got a top-notch millwork.
Right, right.
I do know that, but I think get ready to get out of jail, get their plan on using, so.
Good deal.
Sounds good.
Yes, sir.
May I add something, gentlemen?
Sure.
I mentioned this to Craig, he may have mentioned it to you. Each one of our courtrooms has a seal in it that has the retired state flag on it. And it's not on something you can just pull off the wall. It's made into the millwork behind each bench. I think the cost is just nothing. But if y'all would consider authorizing whoever does that work, because they're going to be matching all the wood in the place anyway, pull that out and just put a regular panel, that one that having God we trust on it. Anyway, put a regular seal of some kind in those courtrooms while they're doing it. The cost would be negligible. But I just, I think with your permission.
Judge Mack, that's the seal for the board supervisors. That's not the state seal, but are you, are you saying use the state seal?
Probably, yeah. I mean, yeah, whatever. The cost of the seal is not going to be anything. It's just made into that wood, and the whole panel's going to have to be replaced, and we got a great carpenter, millwork guy, that could do that while we're at it. So that's all I'd ask you to consider. I don't even know if you'll have to authorize that, but I don't want anybody to be surprised, so.
Yeah.
All right.
Appreciate you.
All right. So, yeah, do we need to do a motion to get him to do the drawings?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right.
I'll make the motion.
All right.
Second.
But Jared, taken by Brad, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have. All right.
So the, as, as the drawings are complete, your indication is quickly get together a plan to go forward with the drawing. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah. And if we, if we find out if our staff can do it, we'll just hire somebody, and we can get a couple of clues.
We'll report back to you guys as soon as we can, hopefully by 15.
All right, good deal.
I wanted to add one other thing, just for information, because I know Larry asked me about it. At the end of the project, the new courthouse, the city decided that they needed emergency egress signs. So we've gotten, and before, this was after the fact, so we, we had temporary ones put up there. But we need to get some permanent ones done, and I, I think last time I mentioned, you know, we, I recommend where to get those done, and county can just put them on the wall rather than have the contractor.
No kidding.
So if you go up there and you see something taped to the wall, I guess I know that's not appropriate, but I don't. I'll believe that.
What is on me that I'll be able to tape on the wall?
That had to be, that came, that came from the city at the last moment, so we just had to move quickly to get those done. And so I'll get something put together for that, for y'all to give somebody.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Gentlemen, item C is a discussion of a potential action regarding restrictive covenants that are associated with access to property via a private road called Brandywine, I think it may be Drive. It's, I, I did that wrong. I think it's Brandywine Drive. This is in Jared's district. This is a, a piece of property, or a large parcel property, that was subdivided many years ago, and was not subdivided in compliance with the county's development ordinance. On the backside of finding out about that activity, we utilized really about the only option that we had in order for the situation to be addressed, which is to have a set of restrictive covenants drafted and signed by all of the property owners at the time, indicating their understanding that no, no further subdividing activity would, would be undertaken with respect to any of the lots unless and until the road, Brandywine Drive, was brought up to county standards. That's a typical restrictive covenant that we utilize. The county was responsible for putting that together. It looks like it was put together by Mr. Morrow, who would have been serving up till the first couple of months, three months, in 2008. So the covenants were actually drafted and filed of record prior to his departure, sometime in that March away timeframe. So they've been in place for quite a long time out there. There were probably a dozen or so parcels, maybe at the most. There has been, just by way of full disclosure, there has been some subdividing activity that has occurred through the years. I don't know how many of the parcels have been subdivided. Don't even know if anything's been built on the subdivided parcels. That could be a situation where it was divided and deeds were recorded, but nothing has happened. And so there would have been no reason to come to the county and ask for a building permit, or ask for an address, or anything else like that. So it's possible that some of this subdividing activity just occurred as a natural course. But other subdividing activity has occurred, including some recent subdividing, where you've actually got someone who's looking to get a building permit and wants to build, and it clearly violates the covenants that are of record. I don't have an explanation as to why the covenants were not discovered at the time that the properties were subdivided.
Is it on the deed?
It's not on the deeds. It's a separate document that's filed of record in the land records, Jay. And it's attenuated to all of the properties that are out there, so by parcel ID. My, my best explanation is it's an oversight. It just simply got missed.
Nobody that's talked to me has said that you ever seen it.
Oh, yeah. Well, I know for a fact that the guy that talked to you, I spoke with one of the owners out there who did live out there, and he told me that they, they all knew that they weren't subdividing.
So we're at, we're at an impasse. We're at, we're in a situation now where you've got folks that are holding title now to a piece of property that has been carved out of a parcel, and they are in a position where they can do nothing with it. They can't sell it. They can't build on it. They can't get an address for it. They're basically stuck. You guys control the covenants that I'm talking about, so it's up to you guys to decide what, if anything, you're going to do to address that situation. Again, what, if anything, you're going to do. So that's what we're here to talk about. What do we need to do with the restrictive covenants that are of record in light of the fact that you've got some, some problems there now that are insurmountable for the property owners?
I just don't see why we would come up with a new set of covenants when the old ones weren't abiding by, to start with. So they say going forward that, you know.
I don't know what to do, I don't know what to do, but, but in a situation like this, though, as an individual has pieced together and now owns, I don't know, 30 or 40 acres, he can't separate any of that off for one of his own children or whatever.
That's right.
I'm just, kind of, that's kind of. If he can't divide it anymore.
You said 30 or 40 acres?
I said, yeah, if he's acquired, buying through, buying this part and whatever, and has 30-plus acres out there.
Well, the way it was set up, they were each in, what, 10-acre parcels?
I don't know. That's your district.
Well, I mean, that's the way it was set up. Well, I mean, that's the way it was set up. It was all supposed to be ten acre parcels.
Well, what I'm getting at, he must have bought some.
Well, as each one of them he bought, they were each ten acre parcels, so they already divided.
So I was saying, he must have thirty acres or so, so how do they, how can someone then?
Yeah.
Let's just say he had a child, want to build a house, or he or she, how can he build a house on it?
I guess I'm missing your point, because if you accumulated multiple lots, you got multiple lots.
Yeah, Jay, I think these are meets and bounds. Uh, I think they're not lots. See, it was never done as a platted subdivision, it wasn't done correctly to begin with. Just right out of the box, the whole thing was done.
Right.
Not in conformity with with our development ordinance. What should have happened is it should have been a a two hundred and fifty acre block of property. It should have, there there should have been some engineering done, the road should have been laid in, the lots should have been divided out, it should have been lot one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, Brandywine subdivision, a plat, blah, 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 filed of record, goes through the engineer, engineer looks at it all, that's the way it should have been done, it wasn't done that way. It was done a lot, uh, with meets and bounds, go this far, go turn a right and go that far, I'm the I'm using my engineering.
I was just saying, though, each one of them were approximately ten acre.
Yeah, possibly, and and when he went, as he acquired, I I don't know how that acquisition was done. If if it was three separately described areas, he he could have had it surveyed off as one block of property. And so when he took possession of it, he took possession of one block of property from a common owner. It was a developer, there was somebody out there that owned that owned the whole block and was selling them off.
I don't know.
He may have bought thirty acres as one separately described piece.
It may be more, maybe thirty-five, I don't know, but it's it's more than ten.
So to Jared's point, because the covenants say you can't subdivide, he's got a thirty acre piece. That's gonna be a thirty acre piece, period, or he's in violation of the covenants, or he can bring Brandywine up.
But, you know.
I I may be wrong, but the the, uh, as I recall it, they they were not equal sized lots. There were some lots out there that were much larger than others. That's my recollection, just from.
I think there's one out there that's, uh, nine point something, it's under ten acres.
Don't we have a tax, can we get a tax mouth of it and look at that way?
Yeah.
But I guess the thing is, somewhere it's been divided. The problem is right now, and I'm trying to, somebody owns a piece of property they can't do anything with, and they, and the way I understand it, somebody was selling, I think about a ten acre deal, and I decided I'm buying five, and you decide you're gonna buy five. And we, and whoever owned it originally, so they had split it, so I said, sure, I'll buy that five, and you said you're gonna buy that five, and you've already built your house on your five, and now I'm wanting to build on mine, I can't do it. And I don't know how they got, how that happened, but I think the house, what I was told, had been built three, four years. But now they want to do something with their five, and they can't do anything with it. So I I'm trying to just figure out a way to try to help that situation. Personally, I don't care if the if the road stays private.
What would, I think when we talked about this the last time, if every person that's property owner signs off and says, I'm okay with this person being able to subdivide this lot. And I guess you just have to handle each one on case by case basis, if you did it that way. Would that?
Yeah, no, that's the only thing I was concerned about, Steve, is is just what you're saying. Okay, they say, okay, we're all okay with her doing this, or he, she, whoever, these people doing this. Then the next one down the road comes up, you know what, I want to buy mine.
I want to split mine.
I want I want to let my daughter.
Yeah.
Build a house on that five acres of my ten.
Well, I got the same situation.
Unless unless we could, the only thing, the only thing I can think of is make it where it has to be five acres, can't be less than five.
You better go four, because you got one place that's nine point something, you said.
Yeah, it has to come in and ask for a bear. But I'm just saying, five acres, because I don't think anybody out there would want a three acre, a bunch of little.
Yeah.
Three acre lots out there.
Yeah, and the whole purpose for the covenants to begin with was so that we could better address and 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 in some way control the number of house tops that are being accessed on a non-compliant private road.
Yeah.
As the whole thing.
Somebody's missing, like you said, I was wondering how this is not, uh, seen on a deed or something, and that's what you described. I can kind of see as a separate somewhere.
Yeah.
That somebody's missing.
I got one that was similar. It happens.
Yes.
I mean, it's gonna happen, but.
What what we're required to do is to place it in a position of notice to the whole world. That's what our land records are for.
But in this.
We gave notice to the whole world, don't subdivide these lots until certain things are happening. And that should be a trigger mechanism for anybody looking in the land records, as they're zeroing in on a specific piece of property, that document is tied to that piece of property. They should read it and then carefully proceed complying with it. And that got missed, that part of it got missed.
Whole thing got missed really from the very beginning. I mean, the whole thing, when the people started.
Yes.
The land came there and started buying these, I mean, Jay's more familiar with it than I am, but.
So we we have a.
Situation here, she, this person has five acres, they need to be allowed to do something with it, otherwise they have.
I I like saying, man, you know, I know how it was set up to start with. Porter went out there and sold lots, and so we told him, that's when we set it up, said, no more, you can do ten acre lots, no subdividing, and that's the way it was. And I think if you talk to some of the people who live out there, they may not be too happy about doing five acre lots.
They need to sign something off then, maybe. I don't know what to do. They they knew that was sold out there.
Right.
They did at the same time.
Well, I I'm just saying, if we decide to do it, allow everybody to do five acre lots, you might want to check.
I'm not, I didn't say that. I didn't say it at all. Right now, we're trying to figure out what to do with the one five acre lot.
So we have a a set of restrictive covenants that has each of the lots identified that are burdened with the covenants. They're all identified by parcel ID. In fact, it has the name of the owner at the time, I don't know if it's still the owner, same owner. But it has the name of the owner, and it has the parcel ID number on the covenants. Uh, about the only thing that I can think of that's workable, that I think's workable for us, because it's our covenants. And so that we don't get sideways with anybody else's that has property that is burdened by those, so we don't get sideways and put somebody in a bad spot. We need whoever it is that's wanting relief from those covenants to go to each of those people or each of those property owners and ask them to execute a document indicating they are willing to allow one subdividing of a specific lot so that it results in two five acre pieces. If everybody signs.
One particular one we're talking about.
Yes, and if everybody signs off on that, along with this document, with a statement that says, by signing here, you are not indicating that you have any right to subdivide your property.
Mm-hmm.
Make that clear. There's gonna be one, in essence, forgivable violation, we're gonna let that one go. And that gives you guys the ability at that point to say, anybody that really had an interest in this, that could have objected, has has said they don't object.
I don't know what else to do. Jay, I mean, why you're you're so against it, I understand, but in this situation, it is a situation, and they were just trying to figure out what to do. I mean, I hate to just say, no, you're stuck with five acres of land, you won't ever be able to build, sell.
I don't, I.
Anything. I don't know what to do.
If they go back to the closing attorney, don't he have a liability?
Yes, sir.
Here issue that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, i- if they haven't waited too long, yes, sir.
I don't know.
I don't know, good soul.
Yeah, I don't know, but I mean, they're.
What is the time period that they could do that?
It's two years, my recollection.
Well, that's.
Two.
It's it's two years from the from the date of loss, from the from the date of occurrence.
At least three.
You got two years.
Now, when the land was bought, I don't know.
Yeah.
So, but you know, even then, you'd have thought when it was being sold, the neighbors would have written, no, they knew it was being split.
Well, only if a sign went up, maybe. Otherwise, nobody would.
By now, somebody living there that long and just over here, probably kind of figured that, because they probably built the house kind of off to the side, in the center of their five acres, you know. I mean, I don't know.
I think they were kind of oblong, too, so I'm wondering how they're gonna set two five acres, and you're gonna have to have a driveway go through somebody else's yard, you know.
I don't know. I mean, I don't know what what else to do, other than have something where they have to get signatures, and, uh, I I kind of alluded that to them, that it may be something like that.
That would give them opportunity.
Huh?
That would give them an opportunity.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and I guess the only problem they run into is if one person says no, then that kills it. Kind of like, are you gonna take over a private road or not?
Yes, sir. Yeah, they always have that option, by the way. Covenants go away the minute that the road is brought up to county standards.
Yeah, well.
There's no reason for the covenants.
How many houses is in there?
Nice many years since I've been in.
Probably, uh.
I know Bob Wishworth has a lot out there.
Yeah.
Still.
Mm-hmm.
He hadn't built on yet.
Right. I I'm gonna say probably sixteen to twenty out there now.
What size houses?
They're big houses. I mean, you know, nice sized houses.
Two thousands, for sure.
Mm-hmm.
Plus.
Yeah, it's a nice place out there. They keep it clean, they they, and I will say of all the private roads, they keep theirs up better than anybody I ever saw. They all team together and take care of it.
Well, maybe they'll let this one person off then.
I mean, I don't know any other way to, there's even an option to do it, but that's the only way I know to reach out to try to.
I just didn't see the need in us doing another agreement whenever they weren't gonna abide by the initial agreement, you know, I mean.
I wasn't saying do that for sure, I was just looking at, I know it's, you know, it's gonna come back up somewhere. There again, I guess they have to get signatures themselves, because if somebody owns a larger piece of property and they got children, that'd be an ideal thing for one to come in and build on.
Yeah.
So, but I, we cross that bridge, we get there.
I I think either what we just said, and if that's not doable, if somebody says, no, heck, I'm not fixing to sign this, I've got twelve acres and I can't divide mine, I think the alternative would be if everybody out there that's on this covenants wants a new covenants that says that you cannot divide less than, down to a property being less than five acres.
Yeah.
Uh, that may be satisfied some people that wouldn't sign the other one.
This board can modify its prior restrictive covenants.
Yeah.
And if everybody that is a party agrees to that modification.
Yeah.
That can certainly happen.
Well, hopefully don't get to that. I'd just like, I hate this person, as obviously has bought, paid for a piece of property, thought they could do something with. And I, and like I said, uh, from what I understand, it's not, um, it wasn't bought just recently. This is bought back in a time when somebody was buying this one, and whoever bought the other one has already built on it.
They they are in a bind, but they still could sell to an adjoining property owner, but it doesn't say you can't have more than ten acres. So if anybody that joins, you may be interested, uh, in having that five acres.
All right. I may pass on to you where you can, it won't be, you can answer questions that I may get.
Yes.
And we'll have to go back and forth to you. Okay?
Very good.
Okay. All right.
Uh, item D is, uh, the discussion of the interlocal agreement, uh, between the county and the school district, and I I want to hasten to add, uh, it it also needs to say, and Pearl's separate school district as well.
Oh, hell, Joe, and I have to take my article, come out, Frank Martino, call me immediately, Jay, I won't complain.
Right. So this goes back to our our prior discussions, uh, our chance for clerks, uh, extra fee income, and the potential arrangement that can be made with the school district and Pearl uh, to provide for, uh, a a a way to provide funding, additional funding for athletic or recreational activities at our schools. Uh, and so we we just want to make sure that we have the pleasure of the board before we finalize any sort of interlocal agreement. I have the document prepared. I sent out a version of an exhibit that will be a part of that agreement that showed a, an initial summary breakdown, if you will. Uh, and so there was some, you know, some thoughts about that, but we need to be on the same page before we present them with a with a interlocal to to discuss. And, uh, the reason I bring Pearl up is that it is gonna require a separate interlocal agreement between the county and Pearl, uh, so there'd be one agreement with the school district, one agreement with Pearl. Uh, and we need some direction on what the board's thoughts are with respect to a breakdown of the funding. Uh, Larry obviously is here, and I'm gonna let him speak.
Yeah, I just, I want to try, I mean, this is a relatively small amount of money, whenever you look at the big scheme of things with the number of schools, and the schools that need the resources the most are those that have very little opportunity to derive money from commercial businesses that support their activities. And I think the whole intention is to try to help these one or two or three A type schools that are out in the county that have very little opportunities to raise monies from private, unlike the bigger schools. And I'm not by any means saying they don't need their monies and and every bit of it. Uh, it it's just this is an opportunity, I think, that we have to help these pretty much rural, small schools to have cleats, to have safety, um, equipment that's safety, well, uh, safe for them to play, or or whatever it is they deem the most necessary. I don't, I mean, I I would like for it to be set up to where they are, they at least have priority with that money.
Right, so the agreement, the interlocal agreement with a school really serves a couple of purposes. It it provides the vehicle through which the contribution can be made. That's, obviously, we got to clear the legal hurdle. That's number one. Number two, it gives this board the opportunity to define how the money will be spent by agreement. We're not telling the school district that they have to do something. We're saying, if you can agree with this and sign this document, this is what we agree it will be, how it will be used. So there's a format for using the funds. What I appreciate from my, our discussions is that y'all want it focused on athletic activities. You're not saying it's gotta be football or baseball, you're saying it needs to be athletic activities. That's the focus of this. Use it for athletic extracurricular activities that are athletic in orientation. All right, so there's that part of it.
That would include like band?
No, sir.
Yeah.
Not not band, it's, uh, band has got a separate, I noticed they get separate funding for the students to.
But I'm just saying, when you say athletic, extracurricular.
Well, cheerleaders.
Girl softball and soccer and all those, dance teams.
Yes.
Tennis.
Dance teams.
Yeah, even like.
Especially like things that are smaller.
We have schools that don't have nearly the seating.
Draw sponsorship.
I know all about it.
Or when they go wherever. I think it's a golden opportunity for y'all to show a lot of support for those who don't have the opportunities business wise to be able to draw them.
That's right. Right.
So so you're ba, you're you're setting it at, as far as a restriction on use, it's it's at a high level. It's not, it's it's not drilled down to specifics where it would say, now, whatever goes to Puckett has got to be spent on this, 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 and this. It's not gonna be at that level.
No.
I want y'all to understand that. And, uh, I I don't know that it would even be appropriate to entertain questions that come necessarily from folks that are affiliated with the individual schools as to exactly how they need to 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 converse with the school district about specific expenditures and that type of thing after the fact. We're directing the school district that we want it used for athletic purposes, athletic event purposes, okay? Uh, the the third piece of this is I need to know, how are the funds to be broken down among the schools? All right, so when it goes to the school district for their review and consideration, if we don't tell them how it's to be broken down among the schools, then it's assumed that the school district will make that determination. So if this board feels strongly about how the funds will be broken down, it needs to speak to that before the interlocal agreement goes to the school.
Can we take some time and not do this today?
Absolutely.
And let us, I'd like to get with Larry, I'd like to get with the schools, and and even maybe some other guys on the board, uh.
I'm I have an interlocal agreement ready, and when y'all are ready for me to finish it.
Well, if it wasn't to that right there, I'd be ready to sign it, but I would.
How much money are we talking? I'd like, I don't even know how much we're talking about.
So the.
And that's gonna, I told Craig, and I didn't share it with y'all, but even as long as I have a good year, I mean, I've had a good year this year because interest rates have dropped, and we've done a lot of filings in in land records and others, but I I plan on continuing to do this as long as the my funding is there, but if I come over the cap. But if I come over the cap and I'm good and I've covered all my expenses and things of that nature, the money that I have to give back to you guys and everything. Just an idea to maybe plant some money prior, you know, when the school season started, plant some money in there just for the particular purposes, as I stated in the paper. I think Chuck has done a good job in writing the article as well. Uh, so I could plan on doing this each year, cause I'm, you know, I'm a here, so, uh, I think it's a great opportunity for y'all to be able to give support for, especially the smaller schools, like Steve said, in conjunction with that. So, anyway, but we're talking about right now of cutting your check to about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
All right, so the way that the, that the current interlocal draft is set up, it is a one-off, it's one year. And, and the, the reason that it's drafted that way, uh, and I'm not wed to that, but the reason that I felt like that would be an appropriate way to do it this time is we simply cannot predict at this stage how that fee income is gonna look in going forward years. There's no reason why a similar interlocal could not be done next year once Larry has an idea about where things are headed on fee income. This, this, it can be redone. And, uh, I would suggest to you that once we get a pattern that's established where this looks like something that we wanna try to repeat, then we will set up the interlocal so that it can be repeated without having to come back and re-execute everything. But for this first time, I think we would be well served to make this a one-off so that we don't set any sort of unreasonable expectation on the school district side, that this is in fact gonna continue. It's all conditioned and contingent upon whether Larry has.
The funds.
The funds available and, and he's gonna, he's gonna remit those. I wanna remind the board, uh, because it's important to be reminded from time to time. By law, he is not required to provide extra fee income to the county until April fifteenth of the succeeding year. So what he is doing is saying, I believe that I'm gonna be able to remit to the county under the statute an amount that is at least a hundred and fifty, and I'm gonna go ahead and cut that check. He didn't have to do that. He's doing it because it, it appears that we're getting to a point now where we've got an arrangement here to get this done with the school district, and we're gonna do it ahead of time so that it benefits the school districts this school year. All right?
Well, and back to the reason I want, if we use the figure of a hundred and fifty and you break it down with five supervisors, just say you split it evenly. You're down to thirty thousand a supervisor, and then you look at schools, I, I think I've got three high schools. Two of them are, uh, very rural and, and small, two A schools. You start breaking that down, it's not as much money as, you know, you think, but today, ten or fifteen thousand dollars just don't go very far.
Yes.
It's a lot of money, it's a lot of money to a two A school.
It is, it's, it's more, that's the biggest donation they'll get.
You set up, you gotta compare Pearl, Northwest, Brandon and all that.
Right.
It's not compared to half a thousand.
You know, I mean, like, say the stands at some of these, where you, I mean, during this COVID time, I hadn't had a need for a whole lot of stands, but in a normal year, some of these, most of these smaller schools have really high attendance. And they may have a third of their population in stands, two thirds are standing along the fences and, uh, so this money could go for additional stands or, or things like that too, am I right?
Yeah, so, uh, the, uh, as I understand it now, the, the, the thought process is it would be directed to high schools. Everybody clear? High schools. I think I'm, my count's right, there's nine of those, and I'm including Pearl. Eight in school district, one in Pearl, right? So just, just breaking it across the board pro rata, that's sixteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents per high school.
Quick math, Greg, I'm impressed.
So, tha- that is a way that it can be divided. It is not the only way, it's not, may not be the best way, but that is a way that it could be divided, and I need some direction. Uh, and if, if I'm wrong that we are focusing on high schools, I think that's a conversation that we need to have because there may be some phone calls wanting to know why we're not doing anything for smaller kids.
It's gonna be.
And so you, you need to.
Now to mention that we probably will.
So we need to address, at some point it becomes, uh, not much help for anybody at all when you have to parcel it out
too little.
Forty different directions and everybody gets a little sliver, uh, then, then it has no impact.
I would like to find out where the need is.
I'm not going bashful in saying, my whole intention was for four, four states, I'm not going bashful in saying that.
Small, two A's.
And I think if I was, out of respect to Northwest, I was there for years and years and years, and I know exactly what they can do monetarily wise with sponsorships. Same way with Pearl, same way with Brandon.
Yeah.
And, uh, my focus is on these smaller schools who absolutely have nothing. McLauren has Thomasville grocery.
Yep.
Park Pisga has a dollar store.
Dollar general.
People, all the money that they try to put, put toward those athletes, athletics in those schools come from who? I, the, the, I mean, you look at the, and I don't mean to be rude, but it's just the nature of the, is, look at the areas of income, look where we are. Look where we're located, look how, look how many populations in that particular area compared to Floyd, compared to Brandon, things of that nature. So, I would hope that principals or the superintendent of these schools would understand they're in a golden spot. We're sitting over here in outskirts and trying to, uh, take care of what we've got without having to break everybody in the community.
Yeah.
Steve, you know this, I do, and I think.
Yeah, oh, I know exactly. I mean, and I'll tell you, it's a little small.
I, I hope y'all, I hope y'all's heart and focus would be for that. I mean, I, I, I understand political pressure, I've been here a long time. But I think if you look at what Chuck wrote in that article, what it was for, that was kind of my intentions then. What I see, cause, you know, we get a lot of calls to support all those too, and we just can't, and we can't write, keep writing checks. Those are personal checks, those are not chance clerk checks.
Right.
So.
I understand, I write them too.
I'm just saying, I know y'all do too.
Well, and, and the thing, like, like a small business like myself and the many of them around, they drive, and I'm not complaining, we're not complaining, but they all hammer us to death, but it's only a small, real small group, cause what happens, the corporates that can handle it can't contribute. That's what, that's what they say. Corporate, oh, we're corporate, they won't let us do anything. The, the, the big convenience stores that could help, they don't do anything. They, they come after the bank, they come after the small, the accountants, the, uh, welding shops, the, the small places.
Little businesses.
Constantly doing that, so I understand what you're saying. Could it not be something that each, uh, uh, you got boards, uh, athletic boards for different schools? Could they not make, we, yeah, and different ones have.
Yeah, different.
Some of them i- isolate, they have a football, they have a baseball, could they not make a request? Probably present a request and, uh, you know, it may be denied, but at least make some request of a specific project similar to what we do with the, uh, the, yeah.
I was thinking, Jared, if they make a request at school, this place, you know, if you use the terminology and verbiage we're using to support those areas that don't get that riding on more, don't get that, I mean, we're using their personal vehicle, personal tractors, as Steve knows, it's a web and radology. Out there on doing baseball fields and doing this and doing that, and, and then they break down, and that's twenty-five hundred dollars. I just experienced that, you know, something like that.
I relocated goalposts strictly out of my, my own, take my truck and relocate those for the school just because they can't do it. Ristol and Florence helped them. They can't afford to do that.
I don't know the mechanism, it's absolutely the perfect mechanism in order to do, that delivers some of that money to those particular areas.
Another reason why I wanted it to be a one-off, we really need a test to see how this is gonna work. And, uh, this, this seems to be the way to do it. Let me, let me caution one, one thing. In order for us to stay within the boundaries that are defined for us by the state auditor's office, we have to have an agreement in place, it's gotta be with somebody, okay? And the, the likelihood that we could come up with an agreement that would be signed off on by nine separate high school principals and the school district and anybody else that needs to be in that is, starts to go down real fast. We, we've got to keep it at the school district level, right? So we have one board that authorizes the execution of the agreement, it gets signed, we move forward. The structure of the agreement is this, if, if we can arrive at what we want it to say, the school district is in agreement, we all execute that, it has the AG's office, they approve it. We get it back. At that point, it would be, simply be a function of Larry transmitting the fee income to the county, the county delivering a check to the school district. And it will then be, and, and to Pearl, and it would be divided at that point in accordance with the agreement. And we would expect the school district to report back to us and say, thank you for the contribution. The contribution has been divided among the schools, here is where it went, the amounts, and th- this is what is being done with the funds.
So basically what you're doing is getting it, well, they'll make the, be the decision makers and not us.
In accordance with the agreement, Jared, uh, we would make it clear that it's got to be spent as indicated in the agreement. That's why we were spending this much time talking about the agreement.
I think Larry brought this to us. Larry has operated his office in such an efficient manner that he has this monies that are available, and he wants to help the small rural schools that cannot receive these resources hardly any other way. He, uh, with his wishes, and I totally understand the two and three A, say, and I don't know where you'd break, but just, I would be okay with saying that this year, let's look at it and say that the funds from me, through, I mean Larry, through us in my district, go, you're eligible if you're three A or less or your separate school district, Pearl, Pearl's separate and they have their own, I would be, Jay would have his own decision, mate. And see how it works with your, this is, to be eligible, you have to be at three A or less, and let's.
That's gonna be hard to do there. I mean, it's gonna be hard to answer that, I understand.
I know, but, but.
It's gonna be a, it's gonna be a hard one to, to sell.
Trying to do, you're trying to bring these schools down here that have very little support sponsorships to a level up here that's maybe getting closer to what their sponsorship requires.
Yeah, but I mean, we've, when you think about, are they really that, is it that much difference? Well, I can tell you idiots, when you've got the fastest woman in the world that won every kind of championship you could win in high school and college and then went home, uh, she never had a track to run on, ran on dirt roads, and sometime they would haul them over to Northwest to where they could practice on a track. There's never been a track at Pisga, there still isn't, and things like that, uh, you know, people at Brandon or Northwest, I don't think that they will have big heartbreak over it if they actually realize the difference in what's at, say, Puckett, Pisga, McLauren.
They're waterproof out there.
Yeah.
You can go to the ball game at night and you're cooking under a bar tent on grass.
Yeah.
And you go to one of the old school, you're cooking on concrete.
And you've got concession stands that are two-story and, yeah.
We got lights there.
I don't have that.
I mean, and I, when I go to a Brandon or Northwest.
I think really what you're doing, you're really pointing out, uh, three, uh, four schools, and that's kind of bad to have to point out that way. I, I, I agree with what you're trying to do, and I agree with what you're saying, but what you're singling out is, is, is the Brandon, Northwest and, and Pearl. You're separating them out because you're saying they have the two-story.
I'm calling it out, I'm not, I'm not backing.
Well, I'm just saying, that's, that's what you're saying, so that's, I mean, I don't, I don't know about it.
Y'all do a good job with the other monies and apparatus, you know, the other monies and apparatus that is more authorized, authorized.
Yeah, but Larry, we don't get to spend but ten thousand dollars this year, you know, so, I mean, it's not like, yeah, so it's not like, you know, and these are all taxpayer dollars too, and, and the, you know, all the parents in Pearl aren't rich, you know, where they all, you know.
Larry, the money Larry's talking about now is fee dollars, it's not tax.
Lot of service though, at least.
Right, well, they still come out of the county.
It, it is coming out of county, but it's not monies that were taxed.
Oh, it's still though, it's all that money is generated from people in Rankin County, you know?
Maybe some, but it's not from Rankin County.
Well, majority.
Yeah.
But you know, whenever people look at us, they say it's our tax dollars, it don't matter, they ain't gonna break down, that money come from, you know, the federal government or, or from attorneys from out of state.
Yeah.
So.
Well.
Where the larger cities got bigger tax base than what these little schools got.
I understand that, man.
It's gonna, it's gonna take us a little bit.
Y'all need to come to Pearl, we ain't got all the best facilities in the world, you know?
Y'all got turf, y'all got turf for y'all's sake.
And there's a lot of parents that have to dedicate a lot of time to make that what it is.
It's, I have been to football games, sir.
I don't know if you wanna allow it, we got somebody back here keeps raising a hand, wants to say something.
It's concerning, Thornton.
I don't even see what you're talking about.
Well, he gets that.
Greg is between you and him.
Somebody in a blue shirt back there.
He's the fire chief of.
Yeah, but he's, he's, I don't know, he just got raised during the conversation.
Okay.
For this conversation.
Well, let's get through with this and we'll take.
No, I think it was, I think it had to do with this.
All I want to do is write the check.
It had to do, Jay, it had to do, it must've had to do with this, that he got raised during this discussion.
And I would promise y'all, if y'all can get through this hurdle, and next year y'all can make a little bigger promise to the bigger schools, if you wish, if that's your wishes, but I'm just thinking that the, our initial thought would be to get these guys up to somewhat par and then move forward if there's a agreement can be done. I'm open, every year I can do this, I'm here, I'm good, so, and to give you some hope for, uh, the schools.
I think everybody agrees this is a good thing, we just gotta figure out what's the, what's the way to make it as good as it possibly can be. And, uh, I, I'd like to maybe, uh, be in a position for us to put the finishing touches on where we're he- headed by the, maybe by the fifteenth or sixteenth November meeting. Can we, can we do that? Can we say that?
Sure.
We'll go ahead and get it on the sixteenth meeting to finalize the proposed agreement. Uh, I wanna be clear, the agreement is an agreement, which means that the school districts have to agree. So what we put on the page is gonna go to them for consideration, and I want you to understand, they may have issues that we are unaware of.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but before we send it to them, let's make sure that we think this is the way we would like to see it to happen. Sixteenth of November, we'll have that on the agenda for you to finalize, all right?
All right, so I think there's a gentleman behind you, which is to address the board.
I just wanted to say something on that issue.
Yes, sir.
I work at Richland, I'm in Florence, and like Florence is a four A school, and I get what you're saying, but like my son and everybody else, we can't play baseball come springtime because our field is literally flooded with water. And we were able to acquire twenty thousand of a sixty thousand dollar project to put in a drainage system in the outfield, and it's worked great. We've only been able to do right field, so in this instance, something like what you're talking about. And I'm sure Pisga and Puckett, and I, and I know Puckett had the same issue, cause I know the baseball coach there, but I think the school board has a guy, this over athletics, Dr. Rhymes, that was the principal at Richland. It might be, and I'm also on the baseball board at Florence. They, just like, uh, Mr. Morrison said, they have committees, each school has an athletic committee. Put that on the school board, let those athletic school boards submit this to Dr. Rhymes, who was over all athletics of Rankin County, and then let him make the determination, because this money's a hundred and fifty thousand this year, it might be three hundred thousand next year, it might be.
It's not gonna be that.
Well, okay, but I'm just saying, he's, he's already told you it might be thirty thousand. If you start breaking it down into percentages and you've got Florence who needs twenty thousand dollars just so the kids can play baseball, and you only give them two thousand dollars, and then you give two thousand to Richland, and they didn't need anything, you know, I think it would be good just to kind of weigh it out, but I get trying to take the monkey off y'all's back, because you've got enough to do anyway. But you got a guy over there, I live in the same neighborhood as him, I know that's what he does. Part of his job is, hey, I'm completely over Rankin County athletics, so, just, and the only other thing I'll say, cause the mayor text and asked that I let y'all know is, uh, Senator Hyde Smith will be in Richland today at two thirty, and he wanted to extend an invitation to you guys. She just asked for a presence for, I'm not sure what she's doing, maybe.
She's coming to Torah.
She's going there, she's coming here.
Oh, she's already coming over here, okay. Well, if you wanna meet down there, we'd love to have you.
She hasn't come here yet, but I'm saying she comes, I think, from there to here.
Okay, well, if you wanna come, be there, we'd love to have you.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to make it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
The only other thing I'll say on your, um, project at the judge's courtroom, I texted my wife, she's at Heinz, and they have a carpenter construction program, and she's checking to see, they might send y'all some guys over to help with that, which I think would be free labor, so, and y'all. I think would be free labor. So, and y'all contribute to Hines, that'd be their way to contribute back. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Next item under my section is an update on the Richland Creek Drainage District. Quick summation, the drainage district came to the, to this board a couple of years ago and provided a presentation to you guys. Essentially, what they did was they made a request for direct funding from this board to support their maintenance activities in the district. Richland Creek is a federally created NRCS type of structure that is locally overseen by commission and receives whatever funding it's gonna receive from a levy, a tax levy on properties that are within their district boundaries. And that levy was set back in the nineteen sixties and has been in place for five decades now. It's never been increased that we can find. It's been adjusted from time to time. There have been situations really unknown to anybody that's looked at it. We've had our friends at Brinini try to help us navigate some of the old documentation and figure out what's happened. There's, there's no rhyme or reason as to what properties are in the district and what properties are not. The levies are applied to some parcels and not others. It, it's in need of a lot of attention. By law, that organization was established under a state statute that requires anything they do to go through the approval process of a chance record, of Rankin County Chance Record. So, we've tried to help educate them over the past year or so as to what their options are to address their funding shortfalls. It's not a direct infusion from this board. That, it's not permitted under the law. It would be an illegal donation for this board to do so. This board has never provided direct funding, although we were accused of having done that. We've been able to prove to the satisfaction of the commissioners that that has not ever happened. And so, there are explanations for the fundings, funding that they have received from municipalities through the years, and they're satisfied that they now understand that. The only option, viable option that is available to the district has, has been communicated to them very clearly on at least three different occasions. And now we have a new commissioner who's been seated, and so he's had an opportunity now to hear this same spill repeated twice. And thankfully, he understands what we're explaining to them. The, the process is as follows. They've got to figure out what their actual funding need on an annual basis is. And then they have to set in motion a process that puts them in front of a chance record to have that millage levy that will be assigned to whatever properties ordered by the court to be assessed. And then that has to be communicated to the assessor's office so that it can be collected and remitted. That is their process. That process to get them stood up, that's the language I keep using, because right now they're flat on their back. They don't get enough funding to even spray the ditch, as we say. They basically have had to break the ditch up into sections and tell their sprayer to spray certain sections and stop. Okay? So, it's not working. It's totally non-functional. So, we've told them, you've got to get the process to get in front of the chance record figured out. That's gonna require engineering. It's gonna require help from the assessor's office to figure out what is your boundary, who are you assessing. It's gonna require a significant amount of work to figure out how to comply with the statute. Because in order to get in front of the chance record and get any action done, you've got to present with your petition all manner of evidence about why each piece of property needs to be assessed in a particular way. You have to define what are the benefited properties of the infrastructure that's in the ditch. We've explained all this to them and tried to help them understand. It's a big ask, and they've got to figure out how, they don't have the money to spray the ditch.
Well, how they gonna...
Where are they gonna get the money?
Well, how are they gonna put a plan together if they don't have the money?
Exactly. Right. So, they understand that. They get that. What, what we, where we left it with them, their homework, is to figure out what, how they want to attack that problem. And they, they can either go and find a source of funding as commissioners, as the district, and then go ask the chance record for permission to secure that funding so that they can get everything in place. Or they can come to this board and ask for this board to provide them with the funding under arrangement that allows this board to recover all of that cost over time. Y'all have the authority under the statute to loan them money so that they can get themselves stood up. In order for that to happen, they need to know what they need to ask you for. So, we are in a holding pattern. This is the update. That's all this is. We're in a holding pattern. It's been explained to them. This is what you gotta do. When you're ready to talk about how you want to attack this, we're ready to listen. That's as far as we're going.
They've set up meetings with other mayors, and I think they're, unfortunately, it seems like they trying to pit us against them situation, and that's really not the case. I mean, I don't want Butch and Jake calling me up saying, we're stopping them from getting their projects done, because, you know, and that's actually happened, you know? Because they're telling them that we're the cog and the wheel, that they can't go out and finish doing some drainage work they've been told they can get done.
That won't be the first time.
I mean, they can get like a federal grant or anything like that.
Not, not for this work. Not for this work, Brad. This is, this is internal housekeeping work for the district. Okay? So, the federal government's not gonna be interested in paying for lawyers and engineers.
But they did, they, they got a...
Tax assessor.
They, they got a grant, maybe pay for some engineering work.
Okay. So, they got a grant that pays for a master plan for the future.
Which expands...
Which expands everything and expands their requirements. And what's gonna happen, Brad, is they're gonna get a master plan study. It's gonna tell them, these are the things you need to gear up and get ready to do. But it doesn't say, here's where you go get the money to do that. They gotta get stood up. They've got to get into a functioning district. And, and if they don't, they're gonna end up with a master plan study that they can't do anything with.
I mean, what kind of money are we talking about?
They got a million and a half dollar grant to do a master plan study.
Oh, they want sixty million.
They want sixty million?
Yeah.
Uh, if I can, can, can I clarify? That's, that's a, that's a funding allocation that has a matching requirement. At the moment, we think that that matching requirement is thirty-five percent. The law got changed, and we think the requirement actually may be fifty percent by the time they became eligible for it. In other words, the district would have to come up with thirty million to get the sixty million dollar allocation.
All right. Thanks for that update.
Yeah, so, uh, big picture takeaway, we're, we're not really any closer than we were two years ago. But here's the thing, there's been a lot of misunderstanding and a lot of misconception about what that thing is and who's responsible for it. And who is responsible for it is the commissioners and the chance record. Change record can't do anything until it has something before it to act on.
A plan, a work on it.
Yeah. So, it is not this board's responsibility to stand it up, to do anything with it. Certainly not to do it comp, to do it free. Okay? We've given them the information. We've showed them the statutes. We have met with them and have offered to do what we can to try to help them any way that we can. The reason that they're, they don't need to just be pitched to the side is because they are the only PL five sixty-six entity in Rankin County. They are the only entity in the county that has a seat at the table to talk to the Corps of Engineers about anything.
They, I mean, what they're really asking us for is a loan.
They haven't asked for anything, Steve. We've told them that their options are to go get a loan, ask commissioners, first go to the chance record and ask for permission to do that. Okay? And then go get a loan? They don't have to come here. But the issue is what, what lending source is gonna look at the situation at hand and say, yeah, we'll make that loan?
Yeah.
Probably none. Not without personal guarantees.
What does it take to stand them up, as you say that?
They have a, a lot of work, a, a lot of work. And you're gonna be asking, and he's not in here to defend himself, but you're gonna be asking your assessor's office to take on a monumental responsibility. They have to have documentation that provides a detailed analysis of the benefited acres within the district. And I'm talking, you gotta be able to show that piece of property benefits from that infrastructure and needs to participate. Right? And that, they have to lay all of that out. It's, the statute is pages and pages and pages long. It gives the detail about how you establish that proof. All of that's gotta be in a petition that gets filed with the chance record. Engineering, survey work, topo data. I, I can't imagine. It's, it's gonna be a monumental ask. Now, some of this, we can probably do a lot R and that type of stuff and come up with some basic, high-level type of analysis and get a lot of this on paper, so to speak. But the, the detailed work that the assessor has to bring to the table, the legal expense associated with getting a petition in place, you gotta notify property owners. You have to conduct a hearing, whereat all of the property owners can come and give testimony and evidence as to why they shouldn't be charged, or they're going to be overcharged, that type of thing. All of that has to be done beforehand and go through the court process before the court can enter an order, all of which, by the way, is subject to appeal. A bit of. So, if one landowner out there is aggrieved by the court decision, it's going up, and we wait. So, I, I don't know the answer to your question. What, what do they need? They, they need a lot of prayer. It's gonna take a lot of work and energy to get it through. But there is no other option. The statute doesn't allow them just to work around that.
I mean, they just can't go in and add the property owners that joins Richland Creek and, and...
That's what the process even saying.
Yeah, that's what it's saying.
Not without the court stamping it and entering an order. It's, it's similar. It's similar to a Pid, Brad. Uh, that won't mean much to you. It's similar to a situation where a district is, like a fire district. You gotta be able to establish who ought to be in that, included in that for purposes of funding. Who should be charged for that service, right? You gotta be in the district, and then you have to show what is the level of services being provided. There's any number of ways to do that. You can do it just by way of parcel. Take the total number of acres, divide it up, and each acre gets charged this much. We've already indicated to you guys that we don't believe that that's a, an efficient way to do any of this. The guy that's got a hundred acre parking lot should not be paying the same thing as the guy that's got a hundred acres of no till.
Right. Yep.
It shouldn't happen. The guy with the parking lot is contributing to a ton of runoff and is putting water all over. Okay. So, anyway, that's, you guys are aware. So, don't let anybody suggest to you that they haven't been counseled and offered options and provided with instructions and invited, bring us, bring us what you need. Okay? Item F, Declaration of the Local Emergency related to the hurt last night, yesterday's hurricane, ratification of the emergency roadwork protection that's related to North Street that results from substandard and potentially fraudulent action by Albritton Construction Company in attempting to carry out its obligation under its contract with Rankin County to rehabilitate North Street. So, I, I think you guys know the details on this. The, the photographs speak for themselves. It's obvious that whoever Albritton had out there working on North Street, they shoved sandbags under the curb, and they covered that up with aggregate. And so, that got discovered. That activity got discovered by the rain event of last Friday. And it blew the aggregate out into the street and down the hill and left sandbags all lined up there. So, those sandbags, which have now been categorized as floating sandbags.
And it already fell in in someplace.
Exactly. We always, it's, it's cracked. It, it has already sunk in places. And so, I met Mike out there, I met with him, and we believed because of the hurricane event coming in and the uncertainty about how much rain we were gonna get, Jay, we, and, and by the way, we were on the phone with the job foreman at the time. This was Monday morning, first thing. We were on the phone with the job foreman, and I heard him specifically on speakerphone tell Mike, we will not have anybody there working on this until the end of the week, meaning tomorrow, as we sit here today. So, we were going to be in a situation where we were going through this hurricane event, that we didn't know exactly what, how that was gonna play out. But we were gonna go through that before they had anybody out there to deal with the situation. Okay? When I heard that, I told Mike, we gotta fix this. It's gonna be a mess.
All right. So, we're gonna do the emergency, and we're getting it repaired. Where do we go from here?
We are sitting on one point four million dollars of retainage on that project. And my full intention is that we will collect all costs associated with this from the retainage.
Okay. All right.
We won't be paying anything else. We won't be paying any other draws.
Yeah. So, I, I have, just FYI, and I really want to talk about this in executive in detail, but I, I don't have a problem mentioning this to you. I've already warned Carl Franco that this issue with, with this contract and how this job has been run is going to be a subject matter of a court proceeding.
And you know, the last meeting, I, I brought up to Carl. I mean, they had the curbs done three weeks ago. They had ample time to get in there and get that, some asphalt put down under those curbs. Never did.
I, I never get ahead of you guys. I'm not about to suggest that I have any authority whatsoever or a part of the decision. But I have already indicated to our legal counsel, this is going to be in court. Get everything ready. We are gearing up. I refer to this as World War III. This is World War III in my office. This file, I intend for this board to, to be protected, and I intend for the taxpayers to be protected. And my intention is that if we're gonna pay them what they feel like they're owed, it'll be because a court has said it's okay. That would be my intention going in. This board has the authority.
Do you know the work that we discussed last time? You know, they said they were having the vendor out there to do work. Have they finished it?
What, what, what?
I think the staircase in the back and the shield on the front.
They got the staircase up. The steps aren't on it. They did get staircase up to the parking lot.
But it's still not.
They had to start over. Their footings were, wasn't very deep, and they all moved and started over.
What about the front?
Uh, they're working on putting those...
Blinds, blinds or what?
Wish I'd known, would've saved a bunch of money on those. You know, and, but we need to talk about it. We need to talk in executive session.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I just want the board to understand that plans are already being made and work is already underway to do what we can to protect the board and to preserve the claims that I believe are appropriate for the board to make as it relates to the finishing up of this project, if that ever happens. The nonsense with sandbags and the excuses that were made is, it's exhibit A of what we've been dealing with.
Makes me worry about what else we didn't catch.
That's exactly what the calculation in my head is. What else is buried?
Well, it was a blessing that it did get washed, so we, I mean, a year from now, all those curbs would've been sunk, sunk down and had to be redone.
We'd have been foaming.
Like cramming cardboard in a hole. You don't want to put so much concrete in it.
So, we got a motion to declare emergency?
Make a motion to declare emergency.
Second.
All right. Motion by Brad, second by Jerry. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Your, your emergency action also authorizes according to the county administrator to, to pay every, all of the expenses that are associated with that work. So, I want to make that clear as well, that y'all are, y'all are proceeding with authority to pay the invoices as presented.
Thank you, Craig.
All right. I, I've got a couple of things in executive. Sorry.
All right. All right, one.
Item A, authority to enter into amendment number one to the MOE between the Secretary of State and Rankin County previously approved October fifth to receive the funds as set forth in House Bill eight twenty-four for the hazard pay, fifty dollars a day, for the election workers, managers, and election commissioners. And y'all had already approved the pay. This is just authorizing us to enter into that amendment.
Enter local. All right.
Motion.
Motion by Steve, second by Brad. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Item B, authority for Kane Underwood to attend MT OA SWAT school on November first through thirteenth and pay travel-related expenses. No registration or lodging cost.
Yes, motion.
All right. Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Jared, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have.
Item C, authority for the Rankin County Sheriff's Department to enter into estate and local task force agreements with DEA and authority for the sheriff to sign that document.
Motion.
Motion by Steve, second by Jared, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ayes have.
Item D, Declaration of Local Emergency Related to Hurricane Zeta and Ratification of Emergency Road Protection Work Related to North Street Resulting from Substandard and Potentially Fraudulent Action of Allbritton Construction Company. Oh, we did? Yeah, we did that.
It got on there twice.
Okay.
Well, Wanda, you so good, you smoothed right through that.
That was good.
What makes you say that, Craig? All right, so this is a business, Daniel once said that Mike was gonna bring it up, but said that there was some kinda sign he wanted, or flashing yellow sign. And he asked me to make sure we bring it to a vote.
That's, that's not what this is. Daniel is on the coast, he got called out, Hurricane Zeta damage, and asked me, because I'm familiar with, this road nearly is one of the roads that we split, old 471. They did such a great job of fixing and rebuilding this road a few years ago. And I'll just be honest with you, it's hard to drive 35 mile an hour. You look down, you're going 45 or 50. But anyhow, there is an S curve or some really curvy area at a five-point area where...
Old Fan and Fanland Circle, Mount Hame, and Church Road.
Anyhow, there's a, and the fan in Baptist Church has just really grown quickly. And I'm gonna say in the last five years, tremendous growth. So there's a whole lot of traffic right in this curve, curvy, curvy area. Daniel is asking for a light or signs, signs, signage that says dangerous curve ahead or something that y'all have discussed, and that's all I know. And, and I mean, it is a, y'all put these little stakes up. And about every two or three months, you can go through there and you can see where it looks like somebody run a lawnmower over them, where they've been, somebody come in there too fast and couldn't make the curve and mowed them down, but...
You don't mind interjecting, the new church that they built, their congregation has increased in size tremendously on that small road, and it is in that curve where there's a tree there that's always been known since I've been there a long time that everybody's run into, cause it's coming around that curve. It's just a, you can't go, you can't speed through there, it's hard to creep through there. But the new church entrance is going to be tying into that main road, not at the five points, but just the other side of the cemetery right by it. If you come around that curve, coming in there, two cars are all coming out that church, new church entrance, with three or four hundred cars, it's gonna be, it's gonna be tough.
It's gonna be a problem, yeah.
The only problem, we don't do sign, I mean, we don't do lighted signs, flashing signs on rural roads. And I get asked that all the time, and we don't, never have, and it's always been, and because, you know, they do get dependent on that sign sometimes, especially if you got one where there's a turn or something. And we, I just always stopped that, said it that way, and...
Near liability, really, if you flash it when the cars come out.
Well, Daniel just said, he talked to the people, he said he made sure to bring it up.
Yeah, well, people talk to me all the time about them, but...
I think you were talking about Jared, you know, the one on Starbend and Road, approaching that church where Mr. Cannon got killed there, coming out of the church, you know, right there, one on Starbend and Road. He got the one that says you're going...
There's speed limit signs.
Speed limit sign, and it slowed down, speed limit 35.
Does it flash?
Yeah.
It's a county road, it's a county road.
Church cut out where you come to church.
It's a county road.
No, I don't, I never paid attention to it.
It's been there for a long time.
What I told Daniel was, we had to come to the board. State A don't mind us putting them up there, we're gonna be responsible for them, we gotta pay for them, we've got to install them, we've got to do all that. Last one we did, I had to come to the board to get the board order to put them up, because we don't, we don't have this in our budget.
We've done some more.
I mean, the thing is, man, I'll be catching...
It's the Ruslem Church.
Starbend and Road.
On Starbend and Road.
I mean, we got them all over there, running over the Chevron signs.
Well, I mean, the one down there, we got one that don't work, I mean, somebody took a shotgun inside, they wanted to...
Well, I mean, look at the ones, look at the, you know, right there on Hickory Ridge, how many times they take those out? I mean, and that's the same thing I was asked there, put up those things. And then the one at the end of Clear Road and White Road. So, I mean, if we just open that door...
Let's just leave it, and let, nah, he's not here, it's his district, he'll be here Monday.
I mean, it's just gonna open a door up of where you did it there and did there.
Recycle bins and compacters, I really don't know what that is. Do you know, Janice?
Yes.
Okay, you might wanna speak on that.
Get to the mic up there.
Sure you don't wake up Daniel to get here.
What's your name and address?
Uh, see, this is the one that got all this. I also have a sheet that tells the cost per haul, the cost of rental and all. What the, there's been a lot of complaints because there's not a, there's two-day pickup, and they have warned Daniel out, and some are pretty rough, cause they've warned me, they've called me all the time, saying that, you know, it needs to be picked up more. And Mike can attest to what a mess it is out there, and that's what it's about.
Out where?
Out at the Reservoir Community Center. It's the one that actually is a recyclable compactor.
It's got a compaction thing on it, Jay, at the fire station. I think now that I know what we're talking about is, we'll get it picked up twice a week. I think they're wanting to increase it, another day pickup. Where we get complaints at is, I mean, if somebody takes garbage by there and throws it over in there, it goes to the landfill.
If they contaminate it.
If they contaminate it.
But what the problem really is, is that the residents don't know how to operate the compactor.
Right.
They have told to go out there and punch the button, and we, I don't know if there's not appropriate signs up out there.
They sign it that tells you exactly how to do it.
They don't work it right. So if you don't come up and compact it start with, and this is what they have suggested from Waste Management, is to stop, hit the stop button, let it compact, and then put your stuff in there and hit it behind you. But not everybody does that, so they think it's full. Well, then Mike screwed those and cleans up twice a week after them, don't you, at least once, I know?
Three, three times a week.
But they're just saying, they have complained because it stays full, and Daniel ought to do something about it, and it's just a constant thing.
It's, it's just like all our other stuff, if it's not manned and proceeded, it's not...
We can move it over to where our man's place is, then.
I got people from John to drive all the way to Market and bring their recycling.
That's what I'm saying, we can just move it over to where we do have it manned. If it's gonna be an issue where it's unmanned.
Firemen try to help, but you know, they're on call and out of that office.
Yeah.
So they can't help all the time.
And it may be the better, better location, get it centrally located, Jay, where we do have somebody there.
If it's a problem, I don't know if Daniel would prefer that or not, but...
Oh, no, he would really get blasted then.
He might like it.
He might like it, but the people from that area call.
But I'm saying, there's only one in American County.
I mean, that would, that would take care of it.
I mean, it's just hard to man just a compactor, you know?
There's nothing, like, down there, you don't, there's nothing in Florence, they come to Brandon. There's nothing at Puckett, they come to Brandon.
All are recycled, either at the reservoir or at Brandon, yeah.
Them people up there at the reservoir, they come out over there, they're people trying to put recycling in that thing.
Yeah.
And Mike's right, he has to clean it up three days a week, and then they come in and bother the firemen cause they don't know how to use the push button thing.
I mean, somebody pushes the button, leaves the compactor in, and then somebody comes...
They would love for it to be gone, I'm sure.
There would be as many complaints as they want it moved, as we do, they want it mowed.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's really...
And I know me and Craig, that was the issue about recycle earlier this week, upgrading our recycle here in Brandon.
You've got some people that feel really strongly about it.
Oh, I understand.
And, you know, if you don't subscribe to their way of thinking, you're, you're an enemy.
But when, when it gets misused, the recycling is out the door.
That's correct.
Right, and I think...
So you're not doing any good.
Any of the recyclable loads gets hauled to Arkansas, at State.
Yep.
It's, it's a problem.
But if one load gets contaminated, it all goes to the dump.
It goes to Scotts.
One bag.
So if you look at your, the last sheet, well, it's higher than y'all addressing on your screen there, cause Janice put on there the cost per haul.
I don't have that one.
I don't.
The cost, obviously, three hundred and twelve dollars and seventeen cents every time the haul is off. Costs you three hundred and fifty a month for the thing to sit there. It's a hundred and seventy-five dollars per ton.
So we're paying seven hundred a week?
Yeah, so a hundred and seventy-five per ton.
Now, we're paying more than that.
Per ton.
They're hauling it twice, and then we pay for the month, and then it's tonnage, and then it's charge.
And this is like plastics, paper, and...
Yeah, a hundred and seventy-five dollars per ton, and it goes to Little Rock.
All right.
That's assuming the cleared customs, they didn't have baby diapers in it.
Right.
Let's, uh, let's study on...
Hear that? Got baby diapers in it, it's going somewhere else.
Yeah, I understand. So, let's just cable this till Monday, and we can discuss moving it Monday.
Yeah.
What? Oh, you wanna go ahead and do it now?
Yeah. I mean, this, wow.
That's a lot of money.
It's been out there.
But I'm saying...
The only...
Well, that's just one of them, heck, we got, we got two more.
Where are the other two?
Well, we moved one over to Northwest, I don't know if it's still there or not, we moved it for...
How many we got?
But it wasn't this same time.
Where are?
Yeah, those are just dumpsters.
Northwest, real good. We got one, now the ones we got, the other three we've got are manual, just sliding bin, you go put your stuff in. That's what we have down here at Market. We have one at Northwest, and there's one at the Station 3 at North Shore.
Is Northwest...
But the one at North Shore is just a plain dumpster, and it's not for recyclable, it's not a compactor.
Well, that's why I said it there.
I mean, why do we need a fancy compactor?
Oh, so we got another one at North Shore, too?
Yeah, but it's just like the ones at Market.
What I'm saying is, is if we bring it to Market and set it up as recycling, we can make and get by with not the expensive compactor deal.
That's what I'm asking, why do we...
Well, I mean, if we're manning it and we're just making sure what goes in it, we're good. I mean, the compactor deal, we went to compactor, I don't know what, three or four years ago?
Uh, it's more, maybe more than that.
It's been, I mean, since I started, it did, and because it was filling up, so we did the compactor, tried to get more in there, which was wor- worse if everybody uses it correctly. I mean, I think the compactor may be the easiest way you make less trips, because you are compacting it, but...
Yeah, and the thing about it is, is that when they come to pick up that compactor, they don't set another one down. They take that compactor off and haul that off and then have to bring it back. So when it's not there, they're complaining about it's not there.
People are putting trash.
They just put trash, yeah, then we have to go clean it up.
It has to be hauled off, it doesn't, the dumpster replaces it.
That's right. I mean, they grab that, they grab that whole unit and take it with them, and go unload it. Just like those days we got caught in the weather deal, and they had something, and it got hauled off Friday, well, it wasn't there all weekend, it was pretty good mess, or something.
Yeah, they complained, we had people calling up here complaining that the compactor was not there. You know, we knew that, because it had to be hauled off, so...
And either let's just move it all or put a regular one there.
Well, Mike can tell you this...
Are we paying three hundred per?
Per load.
No, no, I mean, per dumpster, too? Or is that just for the compactor?
Per month.
Three fifty a month, rental.
For each one of them?
Three hundred and seventeen dollars.
No, this is just for the compactor.
Just for the compactor, so what does it cost for the others?
I don't know.
Would you get that? It'd be nice to ask, ask for that information.
Get that for Monday.
Yeah, yeah.
Also, the solution, cause I've, we've talked to Waste Management, what's the solution to this? What can we do? And they said, well, you can add, it needs another day of pickup, you know, and putting...
Three hundred more dollars.
A week.
Yep, a week, a week, plus tonnage.
Yeah.
It's another per haul and per tonnage every time that's picked up.
But they hauling it how many times a week?
Two.
And that's three hundred and twelve, six hundred and twenty-four dollars.
And what have the tonnage on top of it?
And plus tonnage.
Plus tonnage.
And if you add another day, then you got another haul and another tonnage.
So, yeah, get that information about the other, just the dumpsters over there, I'd like to know how they picking them up.
They done right out there.
So, I, I'll bring it up, so while we're talking about this and y'all think about it over the weekend or whatever. I mean, garbage is a big thing, and I mean, trying to get it picked up and do and everything else. Somehow we either got to set days for these dumpsters and keep them locked down and open them up for the public. I mean, I'm spending a lot of time, man-hours, cleaning up around these unmanned dumpsters in the county.
Only problem I can see with that, and this is what I've toyed with...
Yes.
Is they're gonna dump it somewhere, and then you, you and your crews are gonna be right out there picking it up. Uh, just like the time we had the gate shut and he just dumped the couch at the gate. Well, fortunately, he dumped it at the gate of the barn, but that's the problem. I, I, you know, I don't know how to handle that, because they're gonna dump it, whether it be a pile of limbs or something.
Yeah, but what we're running into...
I'd rather them dump it there and us have to clean it up than us be out up and down the road.
And picking it up off the side of the road.
You know, right now, you find a couch or two or, or something thrown outside the road, and that's where it's from.
People bring couches to the dumpster, though?
Huh?
People bring a couch to the dumpster?
No couch.
Or put, dump it out on the road.
No, that's, no.
The couches, the used grills, baby stuff, all end up on Lawrence Road.
No, no, no. All right, all right, we're moving on.
So, I, I understand, agree with you.
We'll take that on Monday.
Okay.
All right. So, I know we have some more stuff, but you have, that's all you there for, right?
Unless y'all wanna talk about bridges, y'all might wanna wait till Monday, big day.
Yeah, we gonna wait till Monday to do that, too, so... Yeah, well, hang on before we do. Renee, I appreciate you sticking around, I forgot why we didn't complain in commission. William Stafford, we need to send his button to Justice Court, he ain't done nothing. So, I went out there two weeks ago, took pictures, it's just as bad as it was start with it, you know? I mean, his name...
Write it down on there, Jay Bishop sent you to Justice Court.
Amen, I don't care.
It's your district.
Well, we gave him a month to do, or over a month, and it's still there.
They saved moving to Deer Camp.
Yeah.
Hadn't made it. Deer Camp's, Deer season's coming up real soon.
I told y'all the day he was here, what he'll get done, and it happened, so... I, I just forgot when we were asking the plan this week. Didn't we say that if we weren't gonna take care of it, we gave him a month?
Yeah, we gave a lot of people a month.
Well, I mean...
Y'all see it, man, straight to Justice Court, Oregon.
I didn't wanna aggravate him, be picking on him all the time. Trying to give him good, quick...
That one's worse, I believe, I have ever seen.
Thank you. Yeah, Renee just took out your sign, that's all. Y'all edited that out, I know, so...
All right.
Okay, we have an executive session, I know we need to, to do. All right, so Janice wants to make me write my own president, so...
No, you don't get to do it when you come out of exec.
We can do it right now, I'm good with it.
No, you don't want to lack next thirty minutes?
You can do it after exec, I just...
It don't matter to me. It don't matter to me.
So, we need, motion discussed, we need going to exec.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Jared, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have. What had on Monday?
All right, let's move. Everybody get out of here.
They have a plan, I did one day over there. That's, that's why, I said, that's why this thing was put up.
I mean, what's that fish about, Jared?
He's the new president.
I didn't, we didn't vote on it, did we?
We about to.
I don't think he's gonna...
I changed my mind, I changed my mind.
We need to discuss the names.
I'm gonna just keep it.
We did.
All right, so we, we have litigation and personnel.
Make a motion, go into executives.
We did that.
Second.
Motion by Brad, second by Steve, for litigation and personnel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.